Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning at our city council study session. We'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Brown?
Here he is.
Johnston? Moore?
Here.
Orr?
Here.
Flatt?
Here.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is the Library Board update. Representatives from the Library Board will discuss the board's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sandra Shropshire. I'm the Chair of the Library Board, and I'm pleased to be here this morning. I want to acknowledge my fellow board member, Jay Bingham, is also here, and I'm pleased that he was able to join us. Also on the board but not present this morning are Sharon Manning, Catherine Ray, and Chuck Orr. Okay. I want to point out some of the highlights of this year and give you a few numbers, and I will do so. First of all, I want to thank you for your continued support of the library and suggest to you that support in the future, that this library is worthy of your future support. The Idaho Commission for Libraries prepares statistics statewide for the public libraries in the state. And as has been the case in the past, Marshall Public came in second in all large public libraries in the state for the percentage of population that holds a library card, at 83 percent, which is really a stunning number. I also give you some statistics before you of activity that these folks do. Items checked out so far in this current year is 189,000 and some odd. Library card applications, almost 1,800, as far as up until the end of June, and that's the most recent statistics available. Reference desk contacts, that's individuals showing up to the reference desk asking some sort of a question that requires library staff help. You can see that that's almost 34,000 people up until June. This place is busy and hopping and doing its job. I've bulleted a list for you of selected activities that I think represent the activities of the library and suggest to you where they're going in the future. You may recall that the New City Flag entries were displayed at the library, and that there were throughout the year are activities designed to speak to certain audiences of the community. For example, the STEAM projects, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math for youth and teens on Friday afternoons. The children have another activity, and that's the summer reading program that has been going on all summer and plays an important part in retaining children's interest and reading ability while they are not in school, so they can maintain it into the coming school year. There's a Nerds Programming Club. I think they're proud of that name that meets at the library. Particularly cool, in my view, is the cooperative effort to digitize the Idaho State Journal. It's going to take a while. It's a slow process, but it would be the first ever digitization so that folks who are interested in early history of the city or even eventually over time, even more recent history, will be able to have digitized access to those newspapers. It's with a welcome sigh of relief that we can report that they are fully staffed. Had a series of retirements or resignations in the past several months, and we've got them back up to where they need to be to operate to continue to provide these services. A couple of funding initiatives have occurred. The Friends donated $30,000 to upgrade some infrastructure in the building, some shelving, and some security cameras. Shelving is underway, and security cameras are going to be in the coming fiscal year.
And that's part of what we talked about for next fiscal year.
Yeah. So that was Friends money. Of reserve funds from the library, they have begun a project to upgrade the lighting, bring it into current standards, and that is energy-saving standards. And they estimate that the power bill for the library will reduce by $11,400 for a year, once that's in place. These are highlights. This is not the entirety of what's been going on, but I want to bring these to your attention.
So is the lighting project started, and it's just a long process, or you're just in the process of doing bidding and that kind of stuff?
I can speak to that. There's a couple of things. Well, first of all, the lighting project, which we came in about 110, 120, whatever it was, after some work, after revision, and after looking at costs, we're going to be able to do it for less than half of that. It looks like we're going to be able to do that for about $52,000, which is a really sizable savings, and that means that we can still do the energy savings, but it will pay for itself in a considerably shorter period of time, which is great. We are in the process and working with finance and legal to put the process together, figure out exactly what requirements there are in that. The process, while half the cost was also going to take longer than we expected, and so it will stretch into the next fiscal year and probably be done sometime around November. So there'll be budget adjustments and things that'll have to be done for it, but we can do it for half the cost, which is great. And with the savings of that and with anticipated stuff, I think we'll be able to do the whole security thing also cheaply and take care of that in the next fiscal year. So we're in really good shape for both of those, but we're just in the process of working, like I said, with finance and legal to scope everything out and make sure that we do it the right way.
Great. Any other questions?
I have one about their STEAM. I've been involved with the STEM program this summer with a couple educators in the school system. Are there grants available for this STEAM, or is there some, have we talked to the school district or teachers of some way of tying STEM grants or helping them apply for STEM grants to utilize the library and the arts and things?
I certainly can. We work really closely with the schools. There are also a number of grants, well, I might be going to call them a grant because they're not officially a grant, but there's a lot of funding that comes to us through the state library. And so they support a lot of the things that we want to do, and there are programs there. And it's really more of a program than a grant that allows us to get involved and do those kinds of things. But we work very closely with the schools because we're trying to accomplish the same sorts of things. The addition of the arts to the STEM title is really because there are a lot of the things that can fit in with STEM principles, science, technology, engineering, and math principles, that can also be creative, and that's the part that we're looking at. So we have an awful lot of things in the library and things that we take places that do that. So we have certainly gone to schools. We hit every single school every year, and a fair number of them also come to the library and do tours and things. So we work with each other. But when the school has some kind of initiative that works that way and they can combine with the library, we try to do that.
Because I was just taken back of how many students were willing to come back to school for four days a week for four hours to be taught. It's a different environment.
Sure. It's made fun, but it's surprising. There's also, and I'll talk about it, Jim Johnston is our liaison, and the board and I have talked a little bit about something when I was at the American Library Association Conference in Chicago. There is, one of the featured speakers was a woman who founded an organization called Girls Who Code. And it's really trying, it's an effort to try to bring young women into technical fields that might not otherwise have thought about going there. And it's a national thing. We certainly can be a hotspot for that. There's only one spot right now, and that's in Boise in this state. What we're lacking, and what Jim and all of us will work together to try to do, is actual computers. You need the computers themselves. And even something simple like a Chromebook, which are not horribly expensive, we, 20, 25 of those, and we can suddenly be a hotspot and move young women into, you know, understanding and being interested in the technical fields. It may seem counterintuitive, but in fact, the number of young women going into technical fields is dropping. Now, it doesn't seem like that makes any sense because you're pushing all this, but it's actually dropping, and we have the ability to have some influence there. And so, once we're able to get the addition of those particular computers, we already have the bandwidth, we have everything we need, and we have the staff to be able to start doing some of that on a regular basis, I think we can really make a impact in our community.
Thank you. I have an 11-year-old neighbor who is very proficient in coding. She's about this big. I mean, she is so tiny and petite, but she'll sit down and, I have no clue what she just did, but she's involved in that. She's connected into that, Girls Who Code.
And I think we would love to be up for that in this part of the state. There's nothing over this way, and there's...
I'd like to make that happen.
So, but, well, we'll work. And it's the kind of thing that if we can have a community organization, or whoever it happens to be that can donate, and I'm putting together for Jim a spec sheet for what it is we're looking for. So until I get that, I don't really want to go out there. We can start this at any time. There's no specific timeframe that it has to take place. But if we can get a spec sheet of what we're trying to accomplish, what we need, and how we go, I think it's a really positive thing for any organization to say they support that sort of thing. So I think there's all sorts of opportunities out there for community support to get us where we need to be so that we can start to do this.
Any other questions? Super. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll move on to agenda item number three is the Planning and Zoning Commission update. Representatives from the Planning and Zoning Commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Matthew Lewis with the Planning Department and Steph Lays on to the Commission. This morning, we just have a brief update, the annual report for the Planning and Zoning Commission. With me this morning, I have Ryan Satterfield, who is the Chair of the Commission. The other Commission members are Bill Hancock, who's Vice Chair, and Jack Brennan. And then we've had four new Commission members that have been appointed since March, or would be March, Sarah O'Connor, Jack Moore, Sean Hargreaves, and Julia Sanders. And so we have a new group of Commission members, and as such, we did have a training session, a work session, a couple weeks ago with all the Commission members and the hearing examiners as well. And so that was very productive, I believe. And a lot of information was presented to them, and hopefully was helpful. And with that, I'll have Mr. Satterfield go ahead and kind of go over some of the issues that we've dealt with over the past year and where they would like to go in this next year.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Great to be here. So with the new Commissioners, I am also a new chairperson for the Commission, and so this is kind of a good luck experience.
Congratulations.
I don't know that that's the term.
He was even at the meeting.
Yeah, tried to get out of it, but it didn't necessarily work. However, over the last year, I feel like we've accomplished quite a bit. At the same time, I think that I would like to see potentially more that we can do. I think we have a very capable Commission. Sad to see some of the Commission members go that were of great service, but excited to have these new Commissioners here, and hopefully it's going to be a good service to the city, having them serve. Over the last year, we've reviewed two conditional use permits, three rezoning applications, two annexation applications, and two preliminary plat applications. We'll meet twice a month, normally is what our schedule is. However, sometimes there will be times when there aren't enough things going on to require that meeting twice a month. As Matt stated, our most recent meeting, we used for a training. I felt that this was very beneficial, especially for the new Commission members. There was certainly a lot of things that weren't completely understood, and as far as processes and how the meeting should run, and what the Commissioners are expected to be doing, and how they're there to really voice their opinion. And so we're excited now, moving forward, that everybody is educated and ready to be able to handle these things that will be coming to us in this upcoming year. Some of the goals that we have set up, as you probably see outlined there, is we plan to do a zoning ordinance revision, and the Commission wants to be involved in that, overseeing some of the different changes. I think the zoning ordinance is always a moving target that we get to kind of play with and give our opinion on some of the different things that should go into that ordinance. And so we see a number of work sessions and public hearings that will take place through time as we look at that. We're also looking at the sign ordinance and doing some revisions there. In my time on the Commission, I believe I'm in my sixth year. We have already visited the zoning ordinance once and already visited the sign ordinance once, and here we go again. So again, I think it's something that we're always looking at to try and improve and make Pocatello better, for sure. And then, as always, just the normal tasks of reviewing the different land applications and whatnot as they come before us, and applying those things from the zoning ordinance and, you know, as well as, you know, the different instruction that we receive from staff and from you as a council to be able to try and implement all of those things. So with that, that kind of concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Council?
Ryan, you've been in the business for a long, long time. If you look back over a decade, how do you think we're doing? We getting better, we getting worse?
I think we're certainly getting better. I really do. I think that Pocatello is viewed as a place on the map, and I think that that's a great thing, to be where we're at right now. And I still think we always have improvement to make. I think every place does, but I do like the direction that we're headed.
Good. Thanks. I have limited voice capacity. Ryan, I've been curious.
Oh, you almost got applause.
I've been curious. As Commissioners, do you have much input from the community?
You know, it's kind of interesting, as we get people that come to public hearings and whatnot, I think that there's quite a bit of ignorance out there for how zoning works and how the government process and applications work. So, you know, we do get people that will show up at these public hearings, and they then get to learn that we're normally in the position where we're making recommendations rather than making full decisions. And so they get to come and complain to us and then come and complain to you afterwards. But, you know, I think that that is a very good learning process for everybody. So the input that we get there, you know, I do wish that more people would be involved and come to things, as I'm sure you do as well, just to be educated on how processes can work and how everybody can really be beneficial in helping these processes move smoothly. Outside of public hearings, you know, I'll get an occasional scout group that will ask questions about, you know, how the government process works in planning and zoning, and I've made presentations, different scout things for that. But I would say that there's certainly room for more public input coming into the Commission.
Other questions? I just know you have a tough job, so thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to, let's see, our agenda item number four has been pulled from the agenda, and so we'll move to agenda item five is proposed employee handbook changes. Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director, will be present to discuss proposed changes and clarifications in the city's employee handbook.
Hello.
Hello.
Heather Buchanan, HR Director.
How are you doing?
No access to the computer, so it's going to be painful for everybody.
I had to load the watershed presentation.
Okay, we're here to go through proposed handbook changes again. And I don't know if you have a printed copy or your electronic packet. There's a little one-page summary of each item, just so you can kind of keep track of everything we're looking at today. So the first thing we're going to go through is some of the items that were presented last December that there didn't seem to be a lot of concern over. I just wanted to review to make sure that you were still okay with those changes. The first one was a change to the personal appearance or the dress code policy. Our current policy is listed on the left. It specifically names out items that are prohibited clothing. The new policy just moves everything to business clothing or business casual as the expected dress standard. It is up to department heads to police this policy, and it does allow for jeans in office settings that are not torn, dirty, or tattered. Department heads outside of City Hall, they obviously have safety standards, and those are addressed within their own policies within their departments. Tobacco use, this was one I brought forward in December. It prohibits any sort of tobacco product in city, in city buildings or in city vehicles. This was adopted from the City of Boise's policy, and all of this has been reviewed through legal. Kirk put a lot of time into reviewing this handbook for us. This is kind of a departure from our rap because it is tobacco-free. No chewing, no smokeless tobacco, no e-cigarettes. Any concerns?
Well, so, not memorizing the whole city handbook on policies. This addresses, this addresses tobacco use and such, but what are the procedures, and again, for use of tobacco products within?
Currently, we have our vehicle use policy, which prohibits smoking inside a vehicle, and then we also follow the Idaho Clean Air Indoor Act, which prohibits smoking in a building. We don't allow vaping in the building, and it's supposed to be prohibited in cars as well. This is adding chewing tobacco.
Okay, so if a city employee has observed smoking, or is that in a city vehicle?
They would be subject to discipline, graduated discipline.
And that is a...
Currently, our process is a coaching, a verbal, a written, and then you could move to a due process.
Okay. So that's typically the process right now, coaching. And I'm assuming this is on most, all policies.
Some situations are so grievous that you would skip some of the earlier steps.
Right. So what was this again, coaching?
So a coaching, that's an informal sit-down between the employee and manager. It isn't documented. They would just make note of the date, what happened, and then they would have just a little blurb so that they could follow the employee later. The next would be a verbal warning, that's ironically actually documented on paper. And then you go to a verbal, a written, which is the first, which is the step before a due process. When an employee would go to a due process, termination is not the only option. There are other options that we could put in place for an employee. There can be a suspension, there can be a demotion, there can be mandatory EAP visits. There's lots of options that come out of a due process besides termination.
Okay, thank you.
Have you had any violations in the last year you were?
We have addressed, I believe, on a lower level with some coachings. The outside department, it's a little harder for me to say because they kind of manage some of these things in-house. I know if it is seen, obviously, by a member of the community or someone in management in the city, we do let the manager know, and the employee is talked to, usually coached, and then we don't have a problem. Chewing tobacco, I think, will be a little harder. The managers will have to be on board with this. But we do offer smoking cessation classes through the wellness program. Employees can go to those.
Okay.
This is the new social media policy. This was developed with the help, I believe, both IT and video services. It's a much longer policy. This is the basic function of it. It controls how we use social media in the city and our employees that run those systems for us. Any concerns? This was the change to our donated time policy. The current policy allows for donation of vacation time, comp time, and sick leave to an employee. The recommendation is that we would remove the ability to donate sick leave, and then employees would only donate vacation or accrued comp time. Religious accommodation, we are in a world where religious accommodation is an issue that we need to be able to handle if it pops up at work. This policy would then, I don't have an exact answer for when someone asks for a religious accommodation. This asks the individual submitting the paperwork to tell us what they're looking for. We would apply a reasonable standard, and then we would keep a tracking of past practices.
Look for the one out there that requires that I only work three days a week but get paid five.
I would like that one, if we can find it. I'm sure there will be a run to get access to it. So these were the issues that you guys had concerns with this fall. Organ and bone marrow donation was not a concern, but I didn't get much feedback, so I put it in so that we could have a little bit more discussion about it. The first one that we had questions with was a cap on vacation payouts. This was actually pulled from the handbook last fall. Kirk had asked for more time to review that, and he has done that thoroughly for us. We have also talked to ICrip on this issue. Our current policy pays out an employee all hours accrued. So that's every hour that they've accrued within their bank. As you know, an employee can carry 400 hours over from year to year. However, January 1st, if I have 400 hours, I then accrue for the entire year, and then in December, some employees have over 600 hours. We are then paying out those 600 hours. My request is, has a grandfather clause, so I would ask council to pick an implementation date, and anyone who is retirement-eligible after implementation date would be paid to the cap. That means any other time above 400 hours they would need to use as leave or they would use those, we would not be paying that out. Anyone who is retirement-eligible on or before the implementation date would be paid out all of their accruals. People who would fall within this category, they would have to be fully vested with the City of Pocatello, which is five years. They would have to be at least 55 years old for the rule of 90, or 50 years old for the rule of 80, or have achieved the rule of 90 or 80 based on their position. rule of 80, or have achieved their rule of 90 or 80 based on their position. So the grandfather clause allows us to not punish employees who have been with us a long time, and this is what they've been planning on. I know that's never our intention to make something harder for employees, however, we repeatedly ask for people to use their time and not carry such high banks. Our cap is very high to begin with, 400 hours, let alone the 200 hours that a person can accumulate. We're seeing the payouts that are $50,000, $60,000, $70,000, and I know we're trying to control those. It's just not a monetary issue. That last year, where an employee basically takes no time off to drive their accruals up so their payout is bigger, an entire year off without taking any vacation time is a long time. I would be grumpy if I didn't get to take any days off, and the people around me would feel that grumpiness, so it's also for the welfare of the people around them. Implementation date is solely up to the council. I don't know if you would like to go with a fiscal year or a calendar year, or if you would like to do a grandfather at all.
So what you're saying here is that, what you're recommending is those people who are vested now would be grandfathered?
People at the implementation date of the policy. So today versus October 1st, there's different people that will fall into that category.
Okay, do you have any numbers on that?
No. The problem is the rule of 80 or 90. I don't have access to all that information.
Well, what I'm talking about is, so, so you're saying they must fall into those first two categories right there?
They must fall under, they have to be, number one, they have to be vested, and then two or three.
They have to be fully vested? Well, I'm assuming that most people, they got, maybe we got somebody that are hitting the rule of 90 that aren't five years vested, is a possibility, I guess. I'm just...
So most employees, most long-term employees will meet that criteria. Let's say that I've worked here 30 years.
You would hit that criteria.
And I'm still planning on working longer, maybe to hit the rule of 90 or whatever. You're still going to meet that criteria.
They would.
So most, most employees who have been here for a significant amount of time will fit into that.
If you accept the grandfather option, which is what I'm presenting here, yes. I don't, we don't want to punish the long-term employees who've been dedicated to us, and you know, they have a lot of institutional knowledge we need, but we also want to make sure that we kind of end this practice of building up banks as a, kind of a bonus when you leave.
Then what drives the Percy confirmation?
So Percy confirmation, there's actually a wording change in here from what you might be seeing on your screens. We had an employee come in, and we had talked to Percy about what an employee needed. So Percy confirmation for rule achievement would be the form of a formal letter, letter from Percy written to the employee telling them about their rule of 90. Or on a quarterly basis, employees get a letter from Percy that says, you know, you will, this is your, when you could retire, this is early retirement eligibility. Those are the dates that we would be looking for. That's information the employee would have to provide to HR before their last state of employment to be eligible for the full accrual payout. It's on the employee to bring that information in to confirm that they've hit their rule of 90.
And is that, is that because Percy would have the information that you wouldn't have? I mean, I would assume you know how old an employee is and how long they've worked here.
Yes, so I've worked somewhere else and had Percy before. The city doesn't have record of that in my calculation of my rule of 90. I don't even have to wait for a quarterly communication. I can just request a meeting with Percy to sit down and talk about retirement, and they will generate that information for me.
Okay.
It's not a strenuous process for an employee, but it does put the ball in their court that they are required to submit that documentation, show they hit the criteria.
Generally, an employee, if they're getting ready to do that, they're going to have that meeting with Percy.
That's correct. Most of our employees are very proactive in making sure their stuff with Percy is exactly where they think it is. And we can provide, depending on the ways about kind of gearing up for retirement, and then how you would contact Percy if there's any questions around that.
Well, due to my simple mind and the world I live in, and government seems to have to complex and bring complexity to most everything they do. So if I've worked for the City of Pocatello 10 years, but I happen to hit the rule of 80 or 90 or whatever, then I'm no, I'm not grandfathered.
Correct. You would be paid out to the cap.
The cap in, the cap being 400 hours.
That is correct. Which is still...
Well, yeah. I mean, that's essentially five, five weeks or eight weeks worth of... Five times 40, eight times 40. I agree with you, but 10 weeks.
Forty to 50.
With two and a half months of pay. Well, certainly, I think there's a lot of other ways to write this that's simpler, but that's okay, but, so, so ultimately, those that have hit the rule of 90 right now or 80, trying to get my head around this because we've got some people in retirement, okay? Okay, but let's say I haven't...
I'm going to bring in my financial...
Well, I mean, this isn't, I mean, I apologize if it looks this complicated, but it shouldn't be. What I'm saying is, we've got people who are probably going to retire in two years that may not hit the rule of 90 yet, okay?
But I'm going to give you an example, because I want to clarify one and two. Let's say I start at the age of 45, I work five years, I become 50, and let's say I'm working in the police department or the fire department, not likely, but let's say I'm a sworn officer or a sworn firefighter.
I wouldn't want to meet you on the street. I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want you to pull me over.
Okay, I know.
I'm afraid, I'm very afraid.
But, but, but if, I would fit the rules right there, because if I'm 50 under the rule of 80, which is your sworn officers and your sworn firefighters, and I've worked five years for the city, I would be grandfathered in at that point, okay? So in your example, wasn't it 10 years?
Well, there's no difference. It's just, let's say, let's say I'm 52 years old, and I've, I mean, there's people that I mean, what's the, what's the earliest that I can hit my rule of 90 with the City of Pocatello?
It depends. I'm going to give you my example because I don't quite fit into, I'm kind of a different category because of when I started with the city as an employee. I won't hit my rule of 90 until one year past my age of 65, so 66.
Okay, so that's, you came to the city later on. You came to the city later on.
Right, I came to the city later on. So I'm one of those categories. Right now, I fall under the category of the one and two. I've been with the city 16 years. I am above the age of the second one. I'm not saying how old. But, but I would be considered greater than that one, yes. But, but I would fall under that category. Do you see what I mean? So I would be grandfathered in, even though my rule of 90, which is another object, which is why she's put the or in there, because you could have somebody who started working for the city back when they were 18 years old, and they are in their, in their 30s, I'm going to say in their late 30s, and they could technically be close to or at the rule of 90. They won't hit the 55 age because they're a general employee, but they will have hit the vested. That's why you have to have the or in there, because you could have employees of that nature.
And you could have employees that are 55 years old that want to retire that haven't reached the rule of 90.
That's correct.
Take an early retirement.
Yes. So, so you have both those categories. Does that help to explain that part better?
What is the benefit to the city of this?
Of which one? Of doing the cap on the vacations?
Of, yes.
Payouts.
Well, that's part of it, but the other part's a huge, why?
Why on the payouts? Because I ran payroll enough to know that people play the game. They wait till the last year, they don't take one bit of vacation, and they wait till December 31st to retire or thereabouts. And they have usually payoffs in the vacation bank of 600 or more if you're in the general side. Your firefighters can be much more than that because their banks are bigger, right? And so your payout that you're doing for the city is quite large.
Is that due to the budgeting process?
Oh, well, that's the little tipper. Now, we've done some things to kind of control that a bit, you know, it tips the bank, because, oh, you remember the, two years ago, what was our, what was the amount of our payouts? It was over $700,000 for payouts. Now, what we've done to kind of control that, that animal a little bit is to not allow you to expend the money. Let's say, Steve, that you were going to retire. You said, "I'm going to retire," and, and you don't.
Great idea.
I know, I thought I'd make your day, so. So, so you said that, and, and you didn't go, and we budgeted $50,000 for your payout. In the past rules, we, we just allowed the budget to kind of absorb that, and we didn't set that aside in '95, too. Well, we do that now, and that helps us, and we've been seeing the benefits of that in the last two budgets. This is going to control and put, make the cap kind of complete. You put a cap on it, and you said, "I can't, you can't accrue more than that," right? And by putting the cap on it during the year of the retirement, you're keeping it from exploding from 400 to 600 hours or more in payouts. It's just a huge budgetary impact. I can't quantify it right now because I don't have an example in front of me, but yes, it's a large budgetary impact.
Heather, how do we compare to other governmental agencies?
I haven't done a direct study. Some of the slides, I have actual things afterwards. I can tell you that our cap is very high. Most agencies have 200 or 300 hours. We're very generous with four. Because of the limitation of our payroll system, we allow for accrual over the cap because the cap is applied at year-end, because payroll system doesn't automatically shut it off. We would have to do that manually. That's where we run into that problem of the extra 200 hours in some people's situations. If you've been here long-term, I mean, 25-plus years, you're at that extra, you're at like over nine hours of pay period you're accruing. That's a lot of time. The reason we give people time off, vacation time, is for them to take time away from work. If we're not going to be using those banks appropriately, if people aren't going to be taking that time, I'm concerned that maybe we are giving too much time. But I don't want to punish employees that, you know, actively take their time and they take those needed breaks because other people use it as a payoff bank.
And they do, they do it intentionally to build up that bank in that last year, and I recognize it, you know?
It's a smart play.
To me, once you put in the cap in place, whenever we put the 400 hours, that thing should have been applied universally. In other words, to both a cap when you pay out and a cap when you end the year. The system just, I have to wait till I do the fiscal year, year-end roll, and that's when it does that, that movement to, to say you're over 400. And remember, you still have sick leave payouts and you still have comp payouts. So, so there's, there's three different banks that are being paid out or potentially could be paid out in a given year to an individual, so it makes it quite large.
So I just had a comment that I'm sure some employees will not want to hear me say this, but when I first came on the city council, I was seriously blown away by how much vacation people get at the city. So I know if you've been here for a long time and you think that's the normal thing, you know, that you're used to it, but I'm just telling you, we don't think everyone else in town gets that. The other comment that I had was, I think this is moving in the right direction to put a cap on it. I'm kind of wondering, why don't we lower the cap? And I totally appreciate, we don't want to penalize people who are, they've kind of moved forward with this thought, and this was their plan, and we're not trying to take away things from people, so I'm totally in favor of grandfathering things in, but moving forward so we don't continually have this problem. If, if 200 is more standard, I'm just curious why we're feeling like we have to go clear to 400.
Multiple problems. One is the cost of paying down the cap. I mean, that's, I mean, let's just say 50% of our employees are over that 200 hours. You would have to pay everyone down that year. That's a huge budget hit.
You don't have to pay it down.
Yeah, on the vacation that has been accrued and has been earned under...
No, they can use it.
Well, the problem is, you're going to have whole departments with, I mean, let's look at the police department. You would literally have no officers on the street if everyone had to use it within a defined period.
Well, there's rules of how you, how they can use it and such.
And that's one of the things we don't take into account when we're having this discussion every couple of years, because we have this discussion every couple of years, is what's the impact if those people aren't saving that vacation? And in some places, it has a big impact. In some places, it creates overtime situations, so the person, he or she that's not taken the vacation, if they did take the vacation, would create overtime, and now we're paying double time. So, not all the time, but there are those circumstances.
This is a correction towards our leave balance.
Right, and I'm okay with corrections. And again, we've had this discussion for a long, long time, and I've, I've always said that I'd be willing to support corrections, and in my opinion, first off, I want to say that I support the, you know, leaving the people that work here that have been here for a long time, they built the grandfather clause, right? I support that. And I've also supported, in, in the past, many times, if we want to make a change that's going to fix these things over time, let's do it with new employees. So let's say that we think that 200 hours is all you want to do, or it's 100 hours, or whatever that number is. Let's declare that today or tomorrow, and say, "When you come to work at the city, we're going to sit down with you and tell you what our package is, and here's how it is for new employees." And if we'd have done that 10 years ago, when we first talked about that, we'd have a pretty good leg up on that, but we chose not to do that for whatever reason, but when you come to work at the city and you come to work under a different set of guidelines, you know that when you hire on at the city.
We did do back in 2008, and I can't remember exactly when it was in 2008, but we did a modification. So you no longer can earn 9.231 hours when you hit, I don't know if it's 20 years plus or 25 years plus, it's up there. It's now capped out at eight. And so we have done modifications, which is just what you're talking about on that particular one, but that was, it's been quite a few years ago. Now, was it aggressive enough? Was it, I mean, that's the simple way to not impact the people that, that came on and said, "This is what I earn, and this is how I earn it." It is a way to approach it.
And then the other aspect of why I didn't bring anything with that sort of, you know, should we put a cap on new employees being hired, is I don't know what direction council wants to go with this. I've heard PTO kicked around, I've heard a cap changed. I don't know what direction you guys actually want to look at, so it was kind of premature for me to bring anything other than a correction to current policy. Anything that's more drastic, I'm going to need much more guidance from you on what you want to see.
Well, again, to me, changing a policy for new hires really isn't drastic. If, if we're not in touch with the rest of the workforce in the world, then let's look at that and base what we do with the new employees when they hire on.
And that's information I can bring forward if that's what the council would like to see.
I would be interested in that.
Well, yeah, because... This, this is like not addressing a, a disease because it's painful to do it, okay? Just running some quick numbers, if you've got 200 hours at $50 an hour, that's $10,000. If you've got 225 employees, that's $2,225,000, okay? But, but, we got, we got to change the mindset, okay? We got to change the mindset of, and here's, here's what I would recommend that we do, is that all new hires, okay? 200 hours is your cap on, I guess, on vacation, this is what we're talking about, is vacation pay. If you've been here less than 10 years, okay, or 10 years or less, you know, you've got, you know, three, three, four, five years to use up your vacation. Now, if you've got a department that's got, every one of them's got 200 hours to burn, then that's something that has to be worked out for staffing issues, okay? Because, I mean, I, I've fallen into the same category, okay? Used to roll over for vacation because, see, we never, we never seemed to have time to take it, okay? But, when you take two, two and a half million dollars potentially, okay, you can put that to the bottom line of budgetary processes, okay? That allows you, one, to pay a higher wage, potentially, two, to hire more employees to cover that, okay? Which is a benefit for everyone, okay? Because time and time again, we've heard we don't have enough of this on the street. Because time and time again, we've heard we don't have enough of this on the streets. We don't have enough manpower here. But again, and then first and foremost, we keep hearing that our employees aren't compensated enough, okay? We're working that way, okay? But the bigger issue is, is until something happens with healthcare, because what is the increase to the city that's occurred over the last four years on healthcare costs? What's the dollar number, okay?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to talk about healthcare costs.
Well, I know, but what I'm going, I mean, I'm saying is, in 2014, okay, to now, there's almost been a 75% increase in healthcare. We've taken double-digit increases for three years. This fourth year, I think we were 7% or 1%, I don't know.
This past year was 12%.
Okay, so four years, we've had double-digit increases in healthcare.
Or the proposed year, I should say.
Yeah, okay. And again, so I fully support that those people that are in probably their last five years of employment with the city of Pocatello should be grandfathered, okay?
But that's not a number that I can assign to somebody. You're then forcing an employee who wants to work six more years to retire in five. That's why we have a grandfather clause based on a few care early retirement age plus your vesting, or your vesting plus the full retirement. I think you're pushing employees out the door, and that legally might be right, but I don't think ethically that's a practice we want to apply.
That's a personal choice.
And it's a personal choice that when you join the city, you have a good faith that the city will protect you. But, and I understand that you're putting a five-year time limit for an accrual, but I think it's better if you go with a retirement eligibility deadline based on the implementation. I will, of course, go with whatever direction council wants, but I think we need to treat our employees humanely, and I don't feel that that's humane.
Well, I think we still, if we do that, we go with the grandfather clause, we look about what we intend to do going forward with new employees. I still think we need to think about that.
And that's an easy policy to generate with research with what other cities around us are doing.
Exactly, exactly. And that way, when you hire on the city of Pocatello, you know what the rules are when you hire on. And that doesn't affect people that we've already got working here that hired on under different rules. And I think that's important, I really do.
Mr. Witter.
Go ahead, Councilman Bray, and then Council President Brown.
I think this is important discussion, but I think the other part of it is, when we've talked to the unions in the past, they've told us that part of the benefit they see in some of this is that they know that if they get injured, they've got the workers' comp time, and then they've got some of this other time that can accrue as part of their healing process. And I've heard Gary say that.
I always looked at that when I was young, you know, maybe the first 10 years here. When you're young, and you've got to raise your kids, well, that was my mistake, I mean, my--
That was a blessing.
I take that personally. That was my decision to have kids, okay? But I'm just saying, you know, there's a time in your first 10, 15 years at the city. I don't know about other jobs because that's where I work, but that's one of the reasons that you save vacation and you save those things is because if you get hurt off the job, you want to be able to still collect a paycheck and take care of your family. I mean, those things play into that.
The other thing we need to consider here is this will affect all employees but the fire union because theirs is negotiated, and that doesn't open until 2020.
I'll play devil's advocate in order for me to understand this a little bit better. As a federal employee, my situation was, I used it or I lost it. There was no carryover, ever. Year after year, I had no carryover. And my three days that I earned in December, I better take by the end of January, or it's gone.
Yes.
There was no carryover, no rollover. So that's my background. So I'm trying to figure out how to balance all this and understand it better. So let me do it this way. And I'm going to take the opposite side from where I'm sitting to try to get my head around this. If I'm an employee and I earn as part of my benefits package, those vacation times, those vacation hours, that I'm going to get paid for one way or the other. I either am going to take them and get paid, or I'm going to have a payout. It's the city's responsibility to budget for that. So why should I be penalized with a cap?
Well, you would have to have a cap.
Well, you wouldn't have to have a cap if you did an allotment for the year with no carryover, I think is what, you know, you lose or you lose.
Right, I'm just in our present situation. So we have this large number, let's just say the cap of 400. What's the benefit of going to 200 if we're going to have the possibility of paying that out anyway? So what's the point of capping it?
Because we're on accrual system, not on an allotment system.
And your only benefit going from 400 to 200 is that your payouts are smaller? That would be the only benefit.
And why, help me understand why that matters because we would potentially be paying that out anyway.
Because when employees are not taking vacation, you're paying them their full wage for the year, plus you're additionally paying out their whole accrual.
But over the course of, I'm here 15 years, and I'm banking 400 hours. That's over 15 years, not a lot of time that I didn't take over the course of 15 years. I slowly saved it up, I didn't save it up all in one year. And so if the city's, there's value in that as an employee and my performance and my benefits package, and I look at it as a whole, why does it matter to me if the city didn't prepare well enough to be able to make those payouts? Am I asking the right question?
Well, and I think you are. And one of the things that we've done just in the last few years is the fact that when you declare that you're going to retire, and you budget that, and they budget that money into that department for that retirement, and then you choose not to retire, that money moves over into a bank. So that's covered. So it was taken from this budget year, so now it's covered. So as time goes along, it's going to reduce that big number. I mean, it's still going to be a big number, but it's going to be funded from previous years. And you could really do the same thing that you're talking about with taking some money out of every budget year and putting it into a fund that covers it.
Like, so we prepare for that payout with fun--
952.
Yeah. What if instead, we look at, okay, we're going to do a percentage of the overall vacation pay, and we're going to deposit into that as a budgetary item?
We do that.
Okay.
It's based on, I'd have to look at the calculation again. It's a percentage of each department. And that is a transfer that's built into every budget, and that's what helps to build those dollars. And then we have the intent to retire that's really causing a bigger savings and a bigger pool. That's why this year, or fiscal year '18, I have to clarify which year I'm in, we are going to have, I think it was close to 200,000 in police retirements, but we didn't have to bring any extra dollars to the table because we had it already built into 952. So that's where you eventually get. Now, do we need to be more aggressive in this percentage? Is it not enough? That could be a case.
I've always been, I've always taken my experience as a federal employee and applied it to this situation. And as I read this, thought about it this last few days, I've tried to put myself on the other side of the equation, and I can't come up with an answer as to why.
I'm not saying this is the answer, but could it be that for budgeting purposes, from the city's perspective, it's kind of like the same thing is going on level pay? It helps us to have a better plan, we're doing our budget.
That certainly does make sense.
Like, somebody could, you know, save up all their money and pay after 10 years their utility bill, but wouldn't they rather get it every month and just kind of be planning?
See, and so I can, I can support that idea of having a cap. I'm just trying to, why does it matter if it's 200, or 300, or 500 if we prepare ourselves for that?
That's correct. And I think in the past, I think the reason why the percentage wasn't always adequately, I give pay raises, right? And I'm not increasing that percentage even though I should be increasing it, you know, because I've got more to pay out in the end. And we haven't been aggressive because it's a budgetary impact for that particular budget year. But that's not to say that you shouldn't be doing it, and we shouldn't be viewing it as a current expense. That's what the whole idea of when we calculate for our financial report, the uncompensated absences, we're looking at all of these items, vacation included, and we're saying, okay, this is the amount of bill. If everyone, if the city should stop working as of 930, that's kind of what it looks like. This is what is my liability out there, okay? And so we should be more aggressively trying to make 952 kind of keep more in line with what the current cost is, right? Isn't that what you're driving at?
I think so, I think so. And so maybe the cap of 400 hours is the right answer. Is it too wishy-washy to say, "We're going to implement that five years from now so everybody can be prepared for that"? I mean, is that too far out? Are we talking about, oh, this next October 1? I mean, what are we talking about?
Well, and when I look at it, you could also apply this thinking on our pension side when we talk about pensions. Pensions are, is it pay-as-you-go? Or is it, are you going to build up your funding level so that you're funded for this future liability? And I think where we are right now is we're not pay-as-you-go. We're kind of here in the middle. Are we enough? And that might be something we need to review and maybe be a little more aggressive on.
I remember some of the discussion entailed the fact that someone could start their career here and bank their hours and then go 20 years.
I know what you're saying.
And so what they earned in that first couple of years now has had a huge inflation rate to it. So we're buying, we're buying back rookie years, so to speak, at premium years. And I think that was a factor too in some of the discussion.
It is, it most definitely is. If in the first five years, I built my bank up to 400, and all I can do is take my current accruals and make sure I don't lose any hours, that 400 I earned here, which if I've had movement, either pay increases, COLAs, and now in our case, the new hybrid plan, or if I've made promotions, the value of that 400 hours has changed, and that's what you're getting at.
And that's hard to budget in.
Well, it can impact that 952 account. And that's where we get back to how aggressive we need to be.
But on the same note, you can look at it that as that person is here, their rate, their reap, their wages go up because they've become more valuable to the city, and we pay them more money. So it's, we can beat this one to death, you know what I mean?
Well, I think that's what we instituted, the cap, so that--
I think we should put a cap on how long we debate this.
We might actually all agree on that.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion, Gary?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Well, I don't have a problem with this being, you know, the best part and that, but I really think we're doing a disservice to the employees by doing this. And the reason I say that is because if they would have taken that same number of hours monies when they were rookie and invested in the stock market over 30 years, this payout would be, seem insignificant in comparison to what they'd earned over 30 years in investing in the stock market.
But we never pay out.
No, no, I'm not saying it. If I had to take that money that I got, if I take that same amount of money that gets banked, or whatever, you know, as an individual, okay?
Well, we just time off.
Well, I know it's time off, but again--
But vacation time isn't about a payout, it's about time away from work. And that's what we give vacation time for.
Well, and again, and I think that gets back to the debate of what, that's, for me, that's a different, that's a different topic, but we're on that topic. But that should be understood when you come to work at the city of Pocatello. I mean, if we decide that it really is important that people actually use that time off, and we want to lower that limit or whatever, that ought to be, when you come to work here, that's what you understand how that's going to be. And I'm not opposed to that debate.
For my clarification, are we interested in a grandfather clause based on years of service? Or are you saying, five years from now, no one will be paid out over their cap? I've heard both.
I'm okay with a grandfather, but we have got to today and now give direction on what we're going to do with new hires and what the cap's going to be.
What if, what if we introduce kind of a mix of this? And we say, you can roll over this amount, up to this amount every year, and it can grow over the course of your career to 400, or something like that? So that there is an incentive to take some time off and enjoy life and recuperate and re-energize and come back a rejuvenated employee. I mean--
So you want an evolving cap based on years of service?
Oh, the cap grows?
No, no. Well, it would grow automatically based on how much you roll over every year, but you're limited. You can't, you can't take all 400 in your first two years.
But once you hit the 400, you're doing exactly what you're talking about. Because once you hit the cap, once you've got a cap, then you have to use your vacation every year.
Right.
So you get to there in six or seven or eight years.
So I think what Steve's saying, I think what Steve's saying is, there's still a cap. You still have a cap of 400. You can't get to 400 in your first two or three years of service to the city so that after you've worked here for 30 years, you've made $10 an hour the first three years, and you've got your 400 hours. And you get paid out at your 30-year when you're making $50.
You can roll over half of your hours every year up to 400.
Half of your accrued?
I don't know yet, I'm just throwing out an idea.
I follow you. In other words, you're mandating, okay, let's say, just for the sake of arguments here, 200 hours in a year. You're saying, you could pick the poison here, but you could say, "I'm mandating that you have to take two and a half weeks, you have to take 100 hours in your year, or that gets lost." The other 200 can roll.
Yeah, up to a cap of 400.
Or you could only roll, you could only roll over 50 a year.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
And we're talking about mandatory time off?
Well, it's not mandatory. You could lose it. It's up to you, it's your choice.
Mandatory time off.
Right, right. You can either take it off, or you could donate it back to the city.
But the thing you've said is how important it is to have vacation. And how do you emphasize that and without saying, there's a time for mandatory time off?
I'm not saying mandatory time off is bad. I'm just saying, is that the direction you're interested in going?
I don't know. I'm just throwing out some ideas.
I mean, I can bring research on this for you. I can do a big research for what we need in the region.
I mean, I don't want to drag this conversation on for another year. I want to make a decision.
I think that's a good point, Steve, I agree with that. I think, I think we should look at, if we're going to keep it, if we're going to keep a number out there and keep a cap, you could limit every year how much a person to build that cap. That would, we would still maintain--
You would say like you would have to use 50% of your accruals within the calendar year?
Is that fair?
I think it is.
Well, it answers part, it helps address your question of people taking their vacation time to be away from work. And I think, I like that.
I guess the only argument I can hear coming from behind me, I'm sure somebody's thinking it in their head.
I don't know whether it looks behind me or not, I'm sure--
Well, I haven't looked. I'm focused right here.
But I can hear them saying, the reason why we have these banks, and it gets back to what Councilman Moore said earlier, that, you know, "I build those banks so it protects me if I'm ever injured so I can take care of my family." They will have that argument.
But there's always, but there's always middle ground. You're still, there's always middle ground. And let's say that you pick a number that it's, you can't bank more than 50 a year. I've just thrown this out arbitrarily, I haven't really looked at this. But let's say, you say it's 25 a year, or 50 a year, or whatever it is. You're still letting employees, if that's, if that's something that's important to them, you're letting them do that over time. So at the end of the first year, you can bank 50. At the end of the second year, and you're still taking time off, like you think they should be taking time off. There's always middle ground, I think, on those kind of things. There's always middle ground, I think, on those kinds of things, rather than just saying, we're not going to do that.
Go ahead, and then I'll...
Well, I was just going to say, another response to that, I mean, exactly what he said, you're still getting a little bit of that, but we just heard Heather say, well, the point of your vacation time is to have vacation time. So, that wasn't the point of somebody initially saying, let's have vacation time, when it was first instituted, was so that you can build up a reserve to protect your family. Like, that wasn't the initial intent.
To be clear, I don't think vacation time should be built for a payout. I think it should be built for uses, though. What do you do with an employee who's only been here three years, and they want to take a three-week cruise, or vacation, or hike somewhere? You've now forced them to burn down their time. They don't have then that accrual after they've been here for a decade. Just throwing the devil's advocate.
So, I'm going to try to pull this back. This conversation was not on the number, a cap on the number of hours we can build, too. This conversation started as a, are we going to allow people that reach the, that have been vested for five years to the city, or reach the ages of 55 or 50, rule of 80 or 90, stay and keep theirs, be able to be paid out at 600 hours right now, opposed to 400 hours?
Well, no, this, this policy hits the 400-hour cap. We're instituting a 400-hour cap with this policy.
Well, we already have that 400-hour cap.
We do?
We do. Yeah, the 400-hour cap is there.
For carryover.
What we're talking about is anything over the 400 hours of last year of somebody working.
So, well, what, yeah, what we're talking about is that accrual of last year, retiring December 30th, and getting an extra 200 hours of vacation, so it takes it to a six-hour, 600-hour payout, instead of a 400-hour cap.
So, at 400 hours, you cannot carry any time over at the end of the year.
You then have a year of accruals.
If you, if you retire at the end of December, there are some employees that can have 637 hours, or something like that.
It's over 600, I know that for sure.
So, it looks like a three-part question. One, are you okay with implementing a cap versus accrual payout? And then, you would like more information on, should new hires come in at a lower cap? And do we want to look at time off you need to use, that you've accrued within the year? So, it's kind of a three-part question, and I bring in your part three.
And I have a question, because when I read the new proposal, it says, retiring employees may not use accrued vacation time to extend their retirement date.
Correct.
So, what's your...
That's standard policy now.
Okay. So, if I say, I'm going to work till December 31st, but I've earned vacation in the 600-hour territory, or maybe more, if I've earned a week's vac, or a month's vacation, I can't say I'm going to retire on the 30th of January now? Because that's what I read.
No, because your cap would be applied. So, what this means was, in October, I would say, hey, I want to take three months of vacation, and then I have already put in my notice to retire for the end of December. It prohibits that action.
Well, it prohibits being able to retire three months earlier than your actual retirement date, is what it says.
Yes, because otherwise, we're paying an employee to pay not their vacation, they're getting more accruals, and we're extending their benefits.
I can't feel like, if I've worked all those years, and I thought, okay, here's what I'm going to do. My unofficial retirement date is the 31st of December. My official retirement date is the 1st of February.
Your cap, the 400 cap will be applied to you.
They won't do that, because that's the whole...
Well, how, how do you differentiate? Because I'm saying, I'm going to take vacation the last month I'm here, and then I will retire on the 1st of February.
Well, that's fine, but then you're going to lose any hours over 400 as of December 31st.
So, yeah, December 31st, a cap of 400 hours hits. So, on January 1, you only, regardless of you had 600, you only have 400 hours. But so, but to Councilman Bray's question, though, if I'm going to retire on December 31st, and I'm telling you I'm going to take a month's vacation, starting December 1st, then on the 31st, I'm going to come in and retire, so that I've got my 600 hours, opposed to 600, whatever, or my 500 hours? What you're saying is, you can't do that.
That's correct. I don't bring you a lot of happy things to decide on, because some of them are all going to be this painful.
Well, I mean, with Councilman Brown's devil's advocate, what difference does it make?
I'm sorry, what difference does it make?
Well, the employee, in this case, the employees earned it, okay?
They've earned a vacation, they haven't earned the extra three months of retire, of benefit costs.
Well, I understand that.
Per Percy regulations, you have to be in the building your last day of employment.
Yeah, because now, I'm going to give them a paycheck for those two pays in December. They're going to earn more Percy, and we're going to pay Percy. Those are the benefits that we're talking about. We're also going to pay Social Security, Medicare, work comp, all the benefits that get rolled into a paycheck. If you retire, all those things go away.
Also, the department, they can't staff that position, budget-wise, until that person's officially vacated. If you let them vacation out, let's say, 600 hours, that's, you know, a lot of time. You don't have an employee doing that job.
Would you let them take that vacation the year before, if they weren't retiring? Would you let them take a month's vacation?
Employees in the, employees in the police department regularly take months of vacation.
Nobody in finance can.
Sorry.
Police probably really need to.
I mean, this is a very broad discussion. I don't have some of these points...
Well, the thing that's important to me is, is the keeping the people that we've got doing stuff whole. So, the grandfather clause works for me. If I, if I've been here five years, and I'm vested, and I'm still okay with my payout thing, then that gets closer to where I want to be.
As long as you're early retirement eligible, or rule of 90-80 eligible. It's protecting the people in that category.
Right. Because the people that have talked to me, the ones, the employees that are concerned, are the ones who have worked here for 30 years, and they're getting ready to retire in the next year, and they don't want us to make that...
If you don't accept a grandfather, and you put a hard clause in, that October 1st, we will not pay anything out over the cap, I will, it will be overwhelming, the amount of people that retire. I am not exaggerating.
Well, I just don't see any benefit to do that. This grandfather, let's change the rules for new employees coming in, based on what we think we should do.
So, I will come back at a few, a study session in September or October, with what we can look at for a cap for new hires.
Well, in that time, I'd hope the employees would let us know.
Oh, I'm sure you're about to get feedback.
Yeah, I know. But I think it's real important, because I think that, as I have been around people, and, you know, I knew one of the good friends was a very hired arco oil and gas, and manipulated, which I can't blame people, because he gained several hundred thousand dollars by working a year, and knowing their buyouts, and these vacations, and all that. And I just, I think the employees might have been planning towards their retirement, and know how they're going to execute it. Now, we're, we're really disrupting the plan for that execution. So, I want to hear some feedback, perhaps, for some of them, in what this would do to what the plans were.
So, is the council okay going forward with the piece applying to current grandfather vacation cap payout?
Yeah, I think we need to go ahead with that.
And then, I will bring information and gather data from around us, and we'll use employee input to talk about the new hire cap, and any possible mandatory time off dictate that would come from the council. Are those my action items? Okay. I got one thumbs up.
That what we're looking for? I'm okay to think discussions, sure.
Okay.
I think it's John McKelso.
Moving on to something equally controversial.
How much vacation did we earn during that discussion? 10 minutes.
I'm not sure I earned any.
It was about 55 minutes.
We don't earn any vacations. We took 10 vacations.
This is our current bereavement leave policy. We currently allow employees to use 40 hours of accrued sick leave for the death of an immediate family member, as written up here. I brought this to you guys before, and there was some feedback I got from multiple members of council. So, I did research. I reached out to a bunch of local agencies, and cities, and counties, to see what they were doing with their cap. So, I have to say, we're kind of run-of-the-mill for here in town. I issue in Bennett County, the employee is required to use sick leave. You kind of go all the way up to, the best in the state would be Garden City, for a spouse or child, it's 10 days paid leave. For immediate family, it'd be three days paid leave, or five, if the person is required to travel. Originally, I had asked for 30 days for the death of a spouse. That wasn't very well received. So, I'm here, again, asking for 15 days of bereavement leave to be granted to an employee who leaves a spouse. That time would need to be taken within six months of the date. If you think about it, 15 days is not that much time. And I'm not talking about hours, I'm talking about days, because it doesn't matter if you're someone on 10s, or 8s, or 24s. The person needs the day off. Let's say you have one week to deal with the death and the planning of the funeral. Week two is just trying to begin to even have some ability to function again. That means you have five days over the six months to deal with all of the stuff that comes with losing a spouse. I mean, there's insurance policies, there's banking problems, there's, you know, mortgages, there's life insurance payouts, there's, you know, if you have children, or you don't have children, there's family that you have to take care of, let alone taking any time to take care of yourself. Bereavement leave would not touch the person's vacation or sick leave accruals. This would be a separate accrual, that would only be granted in the case of the action happening. This isn't really a policy you can abuse, because if you kind of trigger this by yourself, you kind of have some bigger issues. I'm not saying that an employee can misuse it, because after the bereavement leave, they could file for FMLA, and then even ADA accommodation beyond that. But when we were talking about the pay plan, Councilman Bray asked for us to do something, you know, generous for our employees, and I think we're moving that way with pay. This is something you can give to employees in a moment that is catastrophic to their lives, that has very little cost to the city. I would love for you to go to the 30 days. It's six months, it's 30 days to be used. The people need that time. We can't really support them in any way, other than helping them deal with it the best way we can, which is giving them the time.
And I think we said that it's been, it's happened very...
This year, we've had two instances. I mean, it is not something that happens very often with a population of over 500 employees. That's a very small percentage. The problem is, people are not always ready to return to work. It's not just emotionally, they're not ready. Sometimes, they cannot actually function in their job.
Well, and sometimes, it's been a prolonged illness.
Yes, and they've already burned all of their accruals.
Well, and they're worn out.
Yes.
And making them come to work's not going to achieve anything.
It doesn't. All it does is, it makes a very unhappy, upset person in work with the people around We don't allow for donated time unless the person has used all of their time, and then they have to request it. So, that employee not only has to use all their time, they have to then come in and ask for time from other employees, because they still have bills to pay. That's a pretty tough situation to put on a person who is emotionally stretched anyways.
If we adopted this, just using the last year as our template, this would have been 30 days.
Yes.
That we would have granted in these situations.
If we went with this policy, yes.
I'm okay with that. I think, you know, particularly because it's for that specific reason. It's not going out to cousins and nephews.
There's no payout on this, it's for spouse only.
Yeah, I think for spouse, I think it's good.
I had to throw in all the language about, you know, July 1st, conflagration.
I'll just go ahead and say it, and everyone will be mad at me. I don't think that we should offer it as paid. I think it's fine if we want to allow people to take as much sick time, or time that they need. I get that people would want the time, but I, I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that there's not going to be a cost associated with that.
There is a cost, a very, in this case, it would have been 30 days to cost of the city.
But it also creates a little bit of an issue for the other employees who are picking up the slack for that. And not saying that they wouldn't want to, but maybe not in every situation, they would want to.
I can say, pretty much without a shadow of doubt, if an employee were to lose a spouse, that department would step up and donate any time needed for that employee. I don't think that employees will begrudge the person sitting next to them if they've lost a spouse.
Well, I'm not saying that they would, but if, if they get the 15 days paid, and then that person still needs more time after that, and then they're taking more time off, or more of their vacation time, I mean, at some point, it is going to become an issue, maybe.
It can. A person would still be eligible for FMLA. I mean, this could trigger something with mental health, where the person would need time off. It could even go into ADA, under new ADA regulations, a person can request time off without pay. This could extend for quite the period of time. I think it's kind of a dismal view of humanity to assume that other people would abuse this to that extent.
Well, I'm not saying that they would, but it still doesn't seem like in comparison with other...
No, it's more aggressive than what other people are giving. But I was asked by a member of council to bring something that was more beneficial. I brought the number of days I was asking for down, based on some feedback from other members of council. I was trying to hit a middle ground. If we're not interested in this policy at all, that's fine. I'll wait a year, and then probably bring it back.
I'm okay with it. What's proposed?
So, there's a second piece, because we, with a child, I'm asking for 10 working days immediately preceding the death of the child. And then, you would still have other members of the family, and I'm asking for no change to that policy. They would be able to use 40 hours of sick leave. A manager can't extend time beyond that, but that guarantees them the 40 hours that they could take.
Of their sick leave.
Of their sick leave for anyone outside of a spouse or child.
I'm okay with this, Mary.
I'm okay.
Okay, then we'll move on.
Exempt employees' vacation time. This is pretty uncontroversial. You're welcome. So, currently, with admin time, we allow exempt employees to take that in four-hour increments. I'm asking for us to do that with vacation time. And then, there's the question of, would you also like to look at sick leave for this same application? So, four-hour blocks, rather than eight-hour blocks. Right now, if I come in and I work for an hour, and I leave for the day as an exempt employee, I'm not required to use any vacation or sick leave. Do we want to move to four-hour blocks? Like we do with admin time?
So, as an exempt employee, you come to work, let's say you're a couple hours, get sick, and you go home, you're not charged any sick leave.
That is correct. I'm asking for four-hour increments for vacation, and then if you're interested in sick leave, that would put all of our policies in alignment.
So, if we change that to four hours, so if you came to work, and you worked two hours, and you got sick, and we're going to charge you four hours sick leave?
You would use four hours of sick leave.
Well, the only, the only question I would have about that is, you know, we need to be careful with that, with exempt employees, because on the flip side of that, we expect you to stay and work a couple of extra hours, if you're needed, so.
Correct, which is why we give admin time. My initial request was, consideration was for vacation time. I threw the little sick leave note in there. I don't know if you're interested in going that route for sick leave.
I know that when we did this for admin time, it really honestly helped the employees be able to take the admin time. It will help them be able to take more vacation time.
Well, you have some in the room, if you'd like to see if it would be beneficial to them.
I'm okay with that.
I feel like I've, like, beaten you guys into submission yourself.
So, okay, so we're saying, now they take...
You should always save the worst for last, and we'll just go onward.
So, you're saying exempt employees now, when they take vacation, they have to take eight hours?
Yes.
And this we're pumping down to four?
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, 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 okay.
What do the employees think? Is there any cutting wood?
Most employees have, exempt employees have liked it, because they can take half days off without feeling guilty, so they can actually burn some time.
Just the comment I would have, Rich, you know, legal department. I'm in a situation where part of this discussion's germane to me, because of the end of the year. You're worried about your banks. I'm going to burn down my vacation banks by taking four-hour increments. It opens it up for me. It opens it up for me. So then I, getting back to the banks question, the size of the banks, I'm going to be, I want to use it. I work a Thursday morning, pick Thursday afternoon off, I use four hours vacation. That reduces my banks. Makes me in a better position, I think, regarding the, the bank question. Helps drive that down. Does two sides.
Makes some sense.
So all we gotta do is say the bank's open for withdrawal.
Oh, boy. I'm going to need a minute to compose myself if that's the case. Organ and bone marrow donation. There was no pushback on this in the fall. I didn't get a lot of interaction from you on it either. Are we okay with this policy? It'd be five days. The employee would get off to serve as a bone marrow donor or 30 days as an organ donor.
I think it's great.
I've never actually seen, I know of one person, like, know of one person that has done this.
If you know of one person, then why should we implement? I mean, this is...
Because it's really hard to say, you know, if someone has something that they want to do that is potentially lifesaving to another person, and we could speed them along in that process, I would say the life is probably worth it.
I don't disagree that it is a good and valuable thing to do, but I guess the question maybe is, is that the city's responsibility to encourage that, or is that a personal decision?
This isn't state statute, organ and bone marrow donation.
What do you mean it's a state statute?
Listed within state statute, it covers organ and bone marrow donation. We have no policy that addresses it. This is the exact language coming out of state statute for what is granted.
So all we're doing is doing alignment with state statute?
Yep.
So it's already?
Yep.
Been said and written, which is now...
State statute for working environments, or, I don't understand what you mean by the state statute.
So when I researched organ and bone marrow donation, which I knew about from my time at ICHU, because it was a policy, I researched it, and it pops up as a state statute. If it's something that is protected on any sort of level as a state employee, I think as a city employee, it should probably also be equally protected. I mean, we don't, you're right, we don't have to have a policy on this. The mayor, I can do an exemption to the handbook and grant this to an employee. However, if it's already written and clarified, we don't have to worry about doing an exemption and studying the past practice and tracking it. We've already addressed how we will handle it for an employee. It just kind of simplifies a matter, which, quite honestly, we're going to grant the time off anyways. If an employee came to me as the HR director and says, hey, I'd like to donate a kidney to, like, my mother, I would go ahead and grant them exemption and under the handbook. This just sets the practice.
When you brought this before, was it, was it different?
No.
Okay.
It's a different powerpoint.
For some reason, I thought that it was an extra paid thing, too, but you're just talking about giving it away.
It's not an accrual. It's, it would be a code in the payroll system, but it is not an accrual.
Okay. Somehow, I was thinking that's what you were suggesting. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. No, please, I don't want any more accruals.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. Okay? I feel like we're good with it.
Okay, so these are the new items since the presentation that you saw in December. So, the fire department, I've been working with Ryan on some language that we would put at the beginning of the handbook that says, these are the sections of the handbook that'd be applicable to members of the fire union. That way, when they certify to the handbook for our ICrimp requirement, it says, these are the only sections that are applicable to them. Therefore, it removes the need to do an MOU or an adjustment in the contract. It clearly lists out what they would be held to. The union is still looking at this language, and I know they're working on it, so it's for your guys' consideration. Both groups are already working and considering this. This is what they currently are already doing based on the language in the CBA. It dispels it out at the beginning of the handbook. Conflict of interest. It's just a little policy that would go in. An adjustment that payroll processing, legal or personnel issues cannot be handled by a relative. So, for example, as the HR director, I actually could not have a family member working for the city a policy because I help drive some policy, and then I help with personnel issues. If I was an admin in a department and my spouse worked in the department, I could not do payroll processing because that's a conflict that I could be adjusting my spouse's time and the manager's supposed to be checking. Let's say hypothetically that didn't happen, their time could be improperly processed.
This is just a check and balance type of thing?
Yes. It wouldn't affect any employees currently in place that were, like, working with their spouse, but it would prohibit future actions of such matter. This is our current harassment policy. It deals with sexual harassment. I'm asking for a change in language to match an ICrimp recommendation. It spells out sexual harassment and quid pro quo and as a hostile work environment. This is straight out of the ICrimp handbook, and I'm trying to implement any of that language as they are our liability insurance. It'd be good to have our policies in line. Abusive conduct and bullying. We did roll out a bullying class to employees. It was well-attended. We've rolled it out to managers, also well-attended. This language comes out of, actually with the training came of policy that you should probably implement if you have a bullying situation. To be clear, bullying is not a singular incident to the city of Pocatello. It is a nationwide thing where people are implementing policies. We have nothing in the handbook that prohibits bullying. I'm asking for this to be put in as part of the harassment piece, and then it also is one of those little lines at the end of the handbook on what a person is violated.
How open to interpretation is bullying?
A single act cannot constitute abusive conduct. It would have to be very severe or egregious. It has to be documented. The person would have to go through stages. But it does give you the chance to hold an employee accountable for an action that isn't technically sexual harassment or discriminatory, but it is wrong. It would be something that we would keep a very close eye on, and we would work closely with the legal department on any application of this policy.
Is there a, a way to define a clear line of what that is so that it's not open to interpretation?
It would be pretty hard to define a clear line. I recently sat in a personnel situation where basically the employee said, well, there's nothing in the handbook about being a decent human being. You're right, there's not. Some things I can't actually write in there, but based on the actions of an employee, you could get them for bullying. We try to keep it pretty tight here. Intentional conduct, so something an employee deliberately has to be doing that affects the employee's mindset or their work product. So, I mean, it is limited to that. It's not stuff outside of work. It would be limited to things in the workplace.
Was that from ICrimp, too? Oh, that was extra. Okay. And you said that Legals has reviewed it all, and they feel good about...
Kirk went through the handbook with a fine-toothed comb.
Okay.
And then we sat and went through it together.
So we've combed over there.
Employees have asked for the bullying training. Managers have asked for it. It doesn't do much good to have training if there's nothing they can do to help combat it in their departments. Are we okay with, considering this?
Yes.
Okay. Political offices and activity. So the first little section up there, I can't see if you can tell, it's in purple, that's ICrimp language. Then the two paragraphs or three paragraphs after that are our current language. The last piece is, this is all ICrimp language, where I have actually called and talked to Jim McNaul on the application of this policy. This is in addition to our current policy. I don't know where you're...
So on that first slide, you're saying that we have a policy already?
We do. Right here, it says, no current employee may also hold a position of an elected official. All the way down to the end of this page is our current language.
Have we had any challenges in this area in the past?
Rich?
Hello?
Come on up. So I know in the last mayoral election, we did have a city employee run against the mayor.
Well, but he didn't hold a position.
But he held a position with the city. This policy would not allow any city employee to run for, as a member of council or for the mayor while holding a city position.
Are we considered city employees?
No, you're elected officials of the city. You can run against the mayor or against, I don't know why you changed seats. You could run against the mayor, a city employee. I could not run against any of you.
I want to sit next to Gary.
Well, we could roll him out.
Well, you have to hurry up and do that because you got another issue.
I want to sit next to you because you're a bully. Accused.
So we have a question.
In that section where it says, there is reasonable prediction of disruption in that official's office, so could someone still technically run against the mayor if they maybe worked, like, at the library?
If the official determines...
And maybe it wouldn't...
If the official determines there exists a reasonable prediction of disruption, the employee should remain employed, and their refusal to resign, they may be terminated. That is solely up to the official of the city to determine.
I thought the current policy has worked. If you're a city employee and you want to run for elected office, you can do that, and you understand that if you get elected, you're going to give up your job.
And that is in our current policy. If you run and you're elected, you have to choose between the two positions by the time you would take date of your candidacy.
But this is adding it to...
I talked to Jim McNaul at ICrimp about this policy because I was confused. I thought only, like, if I ran against the mayor, that would not work for the relationship because of the nature of what we do.
Long-term, it probably wouldn't. You're right.
It would be awful. If someone in my office wanted to run against the mayor, I wouldn't see that as a conflict because there's no working relationship there like there would be at, like, a department head level. I don't think we want to get into legislating that. That's not something that we really want to do. Jim did say that this is commonly used in counties because a lot of officials, leaders in a county are elected. The city clerk is hired, the county clerk is elected.
Right.
So it's ICrimp language, but I don't know if it's the right ICrimp language for us.
I don't think, I don't think it's ever been a problem. I think if you're a city employee and you want to run for mayor or you want to run for the council, and you're willing to do that, you should have the right to do that, and you understand that if you do get elected, that you're going to give up your job with the city.
The handbook does cover political activity while on duty. That is something if I was running against the mayor and I was using my office or generating materials out of my office, the person would be held accountable for.
Because it tells how old that policy is. It says up there, you can't use your fax machine.
We grandfather things out. So this is language that was ICrimp recommended, though I'm not sure is the right fit for the city. So...
There's other language in this employ, I guess, as well as political office. Do we have employment in this one or in this presentation?
Do we have?
Never mind. Just let's go forward.
I'm, I'm okay with the past policy. I don't think we...
Okay, no correction to the policy is what I'm getting from the majority. All right. Inclement weather closures. Rarely happens. Happened this winter. We had no policy in effect. We released employees due to travel.
So this would, you can count eclipses, right?
Nope. Eclipse was having a little different, hopefully not again in our lifetime here at the city. Inclement weather closures, employees that would be required to work, whether emergency response or essential personnel would be paid as the day was scheduled.
Is it eclipse, by the...
No time would be granted if you were required to work. It would just be a regular day. With eclipse, we're granting a floating holiday because part of the problem with the eclipse is we don't actually know what conditions will be like as far as traffic.
Be dark.
Well, for a couple minutes.
Is that like 11 o'clock? No?
Are we okay with, do you want a policy in there? I mean, we granted, we granted something, I mean, the mayor has the right to do that. Do we want a policy in place to deal with that?
I think it's beneficial because there were questions off.
I fielded a lot of questions from employees on inclement weather closure. Annual pay increases. Currently, we kind of, we talk about longevity and, you know, when raises happen. I would like to remove that language from the handbook and go with establishment of employee compensation. We're in accordance with the following things. We comply with state and federal acts. We have the right to change compensation benefits. And then each year with the ballot, with the budget adoption, I would like us to adopt the fiscal year salary administration policy for that singular year only. That way, I don't have to worry about overcoming past practice because it's on a year-by-year policy. So if there's no change to the wage scale, then there is no adjustment needed. We would just adopt the same policy. I wouldn't have to counteract what we had already written down. It would just be a year-by-year adoption, which would take out the problem of, we had a huge debate over whether or not we could remove longevity from the handbook. There is a disclaimer at the beginning of the handbook which allowed for that. This eliminates any sort of future problems that we would run into with a pay plan change.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay. A de minimis rule. This is basically saying, you know, if you spend a minute or two or a few seconds working on an activity outside your normal work hours, we don't have to pay you for that on a limited basis. If it's something that commonly occurs, like, every Sunday, I have to check my email for, you know, 40 minutes to see what happened over the weekend. That's something I would probably be paid for. If it's two minutes a weekend, I check my email. The city would not be liable to pay me that time. This is based off Department of Labor language. It's kind of a, with today's society, we're connected 24/7 with cell phones and computers.
Faxes.
And, I'm sorry, and faxes. This, this policy probably should have been into effect a while ago as this technology evolved.
So if Gary stands an extra fax machine for more than 40 minutes, we've got to pay him for that.
Yes, yes.
That's right. I'm going to go buy me a fax machine.
It takes 50 minutes to get a fax.
You told me that we're not considered employees in the city of Pocatello, but D right there says are, oh, are not considered. So we don't have to follow any rules here.
Well, let's put it this way. There is nothing I can do to discipline a member of council.
Well, you can't do anything, anything. Like, I mean...
I can talk at you a lot.
Well, yeah, you're doing plenty of that right now, but, okay.
You can talk back and make it more interactive. All right, employment categories. We currently cover, oops, I skipped one. There we go. Employment categories. We currently talk about, like, half-time and full-time employees. What we don't make is a designation between appointed positions, elected officials, and independent contractors. I would like to put that qualifying language in the handbook so that each employment category was covered. Because there is a difference between a regular full-time employee and an appointed position. I just want to make sure that that designation is clear. It is covered in city code. We spell out which positions are appointed. Our handbook should match. This is a reference to city and state code appointments of a position, how the person goes in, and then disciplinary matters around appointed positions, and then removal.
What does consent to the city council mean exactly? Does that consent the name is approved?
Yes. Appointment and dismissal would still be covered in your city code with the same standards.
The process you go through when you, a new department head, director of public works, whatever.
The only thing that's vague, I mean, this is basically exactly what we're doing, is we don't have any language around how you would apply disciplinary action to an appointed employee. I am technically not eligible for due process. My due process would be sitting in front of a city council in an open meeting.
I'm just trying to make sure that you weren't trying to slip a word in there that left America anything you wanted.
I think the mayor and I have had enough employment issues that we are happy to help pass those along to other people.
So this, this information here, this appointed positions and categories and all that, appointed positions, that does not limit, I mean, I see their treasurer, city clerk and I, it doesn't expand or reduce the number of appointed positions?
It does. The city attorney, city clerk, and treasurer, those are by state mandate. Our city code expands that to other positions. This is no change to that list of positions. Resignation. This is ICrimp language. Oral or written resignation is given to a supervisor or elected official. That's kind of our current policy. What it does, employees who have unexcused or unauthorized absences of three or more working days will have, will be, may be considered to have resigned through abandonment of his/her position. So if you have an employee who just suddenly stops coming to work, it gives a timeframe to the manager to move on from that employee and hopefully fill that position.
So I'm a little concerned with this because what if you have an employee that has an accident and is in, out of state? We don't know that they have an accident. They're in the hospital and no way of contacting anybody for a week, week and a half. What do you...
Three or more days may be considered. It's not will be considered, it's may. So it would be applicable to the situation. If I say, Mr. Mayor, I'm taking two weeks off, and you say no, and I take them off anyway, you can consider that abandonment of my position because that time off was denied. Currently, we have no language that would allow the manager to do anything with that.
ICrimp is suggesting that this...
This is ICrimp language. It's got the little logo up top.
Would there ever be a situation where maybe three days is even a lot since you've got the may in there, you know? I mean, I'm just wondering if that's what ICrimp recommends. That's fine, but I'm just saying if somebody just doesn't show up for two days...
They would still be subject to disciplinary action based on their behavior, but we wouldn't consider them resigning their position until after the third day. So employees are still accountable for that time. They just wouldn't necessarily be booted out of their position for it.
I just want to make sure that if there's a, if there's a, an emergency that three days and you're getting cut off, that that's not...
And that's where we're going to go with the may rather than... Currently, our FMLA policy kicks in after three days, so they would have job protection, which is kind of a three-day sweet spot on both sides. I have been asked for a list of grievable issues by a large number of managers at the city. So I developed this list of items based off of research of other cities and states and then larger institutions. So an employee may file a grievance alleging that they have adversely affected for anything other... other that is not employment-related rule, regulation, policy, or procedure that is not specifically excluded below. This is the list of below. For example, an employee does not have the right to grieve where they were placed on the hybrid pay pa, pay plan because that is a management right. They do not have the right to grieve performance evaluation because that is a management right. They do not have the right to grieve a staffing level because that's a management right unless otherwise covered by a CBA, and CBA language covers that. Verbal reprimands, you have the right to talk to your employee about their behavior. And then hours of work. We cover hours of work in the handbook, and it does ultimately come down to a manager's decision plus the okay of the mayor. And so ends my presentation, one hour and 29 minutes later.
It's not bad for 38 pages.
They were controversial pages.
Well, an hour and 20 minutes were against one topic. Any more questions, council?
Not on this part of the policy handbook.
Would you like me to come back for council with any of these topics for further discussion? Or just on the action items I was given on researching a cap and researching an inventory time off?
Yes, to the last part. Yeah, there's, let's put him on just a.
The last part, yes.
Okay. I'm happy to do that.
Okay. All right then.
It's pretty painless.
Yeah, didn't hurt too bad. We, are we, do a break right now, or do you want to continue on, council?
I wouldn't mind a four-minute.
Okay, we're going to take a break for a few minutes, a few minutes seems to take a long time. We'll go ahead and get, get going again. We have, we've got two more agenda items. One is a billboard and one is a Portnife watershed. We're going to go to agenda item number seven, and we will come back to agenda item number six. So agenda item number seven is a Portnife watershed health presentation. Mike Satell, Watershed Guardians Incorporated Director, will present a proposed, or a proposal to evaluate the effectiveness of, of using beavers to enhance surface and groundwater supplies along the Portnife River. Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for giving me the chance to make a presentation that hopefully has a low controversy level.
Well, we can make controversy.
It's really one of those things where it can go either way, but when you, when you deal with a topic such as beaver, it's pretty easy to bring the humor element into it. But also they're amazing animals and part of our heritage here in southeast Idaho. And one of the things about that heritage is that their value traditionally was for fur, and that value is, at this stage, pretty much nominal. Fur prices are never, never really recovered from the slums that they have. And so you have to ask why are beaver being trapped and, and that sort of thing. And the main reasons for such is their ability to hold and store water. Now, if you're an irrigator, that can be a problem. If you look at, if you look at the entire Portnife basin, this is not the headwaters of it, but it just has the jurisdictional boundaries. It's because the headwaters are up on the, up on the reservation. But a lot of, a lot of irrigation water gets pulled off. You've got Tester Field Reservoir, Aramo Ditch, Marsh Valley Canal. But there's also a lot of tributaries that supply water to the Portnife. And I know that back in 2007, the city of Pocatello passed a bond that would allow the city or encourage the city to increase flows into the Portnife River for various purposes. And so that's where the work that Watershed Guardians is doing with regard to beaver comes into play. And what we're primarily looking at is, first of all, once and for all demonstrating that if we can allow beaver to do their business within the local watershed, and that is primarily in pound water, that we can store quite a bit of water in, in the watershed. Now, this is, this is the Mink Creek watershed, which is a sub watershed of the, of the map that I just showed you. And I believe the drainage area on that is around 42 square miles if I'm not mistaken on that, which is a huge, huge area. So within that drainage, there's all kinds of small streams, minor streams. Some of it is on public, some of it is on private. You can see from this map that the Caribou National Forest encompasses the majority of the watershed, with portions of it connected lower down. So what is our, what is our need for fresh water supply? And I pulled this off of a presentation, I think that this council has seen previously. But it shows some of the threats with related to surface water impacts to groundwater. And this is, this is what we like to call a cartoon. It just shows you kind of some typical examples of water quality issues, but they're also connected to water supply issues in that, first of all, if, as we well know, if our groundwater supply is not of the highest quality, then we lose that supply. So quality and quantity are definitely connected. And also the extent of groundwater recharge is, is kind of shown. You can see there's septic systems, landfill shown in there. So maintaining water quality is a big deal, and I'll get to that in a minute, just about how these two are connected. Another concern is flood zone and flood zone management. I know that there's been some proposals before the city to look at recalculating or reestimating what flood zones are. This zone here, this is a zone map, I believe this is Incom, if I'm not mistaken. But at any rate, and you can see just from all the roads and some of the other things that are going through this area, that there's a lot of structures that are actually contained in the flood zone. So maintaining our flood zone and making sure that flooding is kept to a minimum is another important role that beaver can fill in that if we have the ability to store water in small impoundments on the watershed, we can reduce what's known as peak flood damage. And with this particular year, we had quite a bit of, we wouldn't call it flooding, but we had a lot of high water flows come through both the Mink Creek and some of the other drainages. In fact, some people that I know that live on the lower end of Mink Creek were diverting water off of their property to try to save that, save that situation. So to be sure that we understand, because somebody would come to you and say, well, beaver caused flooding, and that is true. When beaver create a dam, they create a low-level flooded zone. That's what their pond is. It's a, it's a flooded area. But there's an important distinction between a low-flow flooding event, which is kind of creeping flooding that causes persistent flooding in an area, and something like a flash flood, like the, what they had in Arizona this year that I think killed five or six people down there. So those are two different types of flooding. We're mostly concerned where beaver can come in is reducing the peak of that flood. In other words, by having a series of dams stacked up in a drainage, then the energy that's stored behind that water can dissipate in the flood zone. So flood zone management is a really important aspect of what we're proposing. The other thing about that is, is that the flood zones are where the water is stored. So if we're looking at storing surface water for eventual groundwater recharge, the place that that's going to happen is in the flood zone. So normally, when you think about flooding, you think about development in a flood zone or bridges in a flood zone or anything like that in a flood zone, think about that area as also potential for recharging groundwater. Beaver, this is a little bit about beaver themselves. And Jim Mendy was here earlier, he had to leave for a doctor's appointment, but Watershed Guardians is working really closely with Fish and Game to help maintain the populations of beaver that we have. And contrary to popular opinion, there is not, there's actually a decline in beaver population across the state. This is some data we pulled off of the Fish and Game website, and then we plugged it into a graph to show what's happened to population over time statewide. And also, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service just released one of their annual 10-year reports and said this is an animal of concern that we need to take some extra actions with. So here we have this animal that provides all this opportunity for us in terms of creating habitat for wildlife, recreational opportunities, and all this right outside of our back door, and can help with flooding, and also helps other wildlife and recreational opportunities right in our back door. So what are some of the benefits that beaver have? They improve water quality by settling out sediment, and there's some actually fascinating biology that goes on inside a beaver pond just because of the way it's set up and its size. They can prevent downstream flooding. And again, they're one of these, this is one of these situations where you can take a flood situation and leverage it into a groundwater or surface water storage situation. So you're making a positive out of a negative. They regulate water flow, again, that's related to flooding. They create and maintain wetlands. And wetlands are a real critical aspect of our watershed. Wetlands are what allow us to store water, keep it clean, and provide some treatment in purifying water, which we all need. They benefit other species. Moose is one of Fish and Game's high-dollar game animals. In other words, the draw tickets for that are quite high. And Jim, we're here, he could verify this, but I think an out-of-state moose ticket is about $1,200. They're highly sought after. And there's a lot of evidence suggests that moose tag, moose populations are very strongly affiliated with beaver populations. So these are recreation and hunting dollars that can be brought right into our, into our valley by doing this. Raising the water table, I'll talk a little bit about that later, go back to that graphic, the cartoon I showed you earlier, I'll come back to that and talk about that. Conserving water, just a little factoid, American Falls Reservoir, which we think of as a water storage reservoir, during the middle of summer loses about 93 million gallons a day to evaporation. I'm just going to let that number set in a little bit, but if you think about how many homes that represents, that's right around the city the size of Pocatello or Chubbeck in terms of daily use. So that much water is being loosed to evaporation every year in American Falls. So large reservoirs, not only are they politically unpalatable, but in terms of storing water, they're incredibly inefficient. And let's see, and then potential tourist attraction. I have a friend that, associate in the beaver conservation world that is doing a beaver festival in Martinez, California. This will be the 10th year that they've done it. And granted, Martinez is next to the Bay Area, but they draw in between 25,000 and 50,000 people every year for this two-day event, for people just kind of to look at beaver and see the stuff that they do. You can check it out, it's called martinezbeaver.org, and I think it's actually going on this It's not everything that people tell you is a magic bullet, always be leery of that because there really is no magic bullet. Beaver cause problems. And I guess if anything, that's part of the controversy for that. They feed on softwoods and crops, so if you are a lumber farmer that's raising softwoods like poplar or aspens, there are some people doing that. It can be a problem for you. It's not too much of that that goes on in this valley. They burrow through dikes, so in situations where you've got a large canal or something like that, it's, beaver are pretty much immediately removed from those situations. Same thing with the eroding, I've got eroding river ditch bank, I pulled this off of another application. They don't really erode the river. In fact, the exact opposite is true, so I'm going to call that a non-issue. What beaver do is they degrade the stream channel. So when you degrade or build up the bottom of the stream, that means you're raising the water table. If you see a stream, if you go up into the hills or across the state or something, you see it really downcut stream, that means you're losing water into the water table. That means your available water is disappearing. And so they really don't erode rivers or ditch banks. They do plug them and they cause problems. They cause flooding on logging land. I guess that's true in general with plugging of culverts and stuff like that. We've had quite a bit of that go on in the county. Not quite a bit, I should say, we've got a few instances where that's occurred, where it's caused some expense to the county, and where it does, it's usually in a small area, but it causes some problems. So there's, there's some problems with beaver, but we think we've got a good way to manage that. One of the things that we've done here in the past is we've installed what are known as mitigation structures. If you look at this, it's kind of hard to tell in the picture on the lower right, but basically what that is, is a metal cage in front of the culvert. And the culvert, the upper-left picture is a before picture. And essentially what beaver do is they take advantage of culverts because they see them as a dam that's already there that just needs a little help to make sure that there's a permanent dam there. This particular culvert is on Dempsey Creek in the lava hot springs or in the lava area. And that culvert and that cement abutment and the downstream cement abutment have been replaced by the landowner on three separate occasions during three separate high-water events that basically the beaver came in, plugged it, and blew out. And one of the occasions where that occurred, that culvert and about 40 feet of pipe were washed almost 60 feet downstream. So it's an amazing thing when they do cause problems. This particular culvert we installed two years ago, this, excuse me, the structure, it's called a beaver deceiver, and it's intended to let the beaver stay in the area, which the residents wanted for a lot of different reasons. They wanted the wildlife habitat in the area, they wanted to have water tables high so their pumping costs were not high, and they also wanted to have ponded water available for fire suppression. So if a pumper truck comes up into an area and they don't have a pond for their inlet pump, it's a lot more difficult for them to fill up the pump fast. Whereas if you've got a ponded area like that, in fact, some developments on some counties are requiring that rural developments provide a water storage pond just for that purpose. So these people wanted the beaver in the area, they just didn't want to plug this particular culvert. So there's really good ways to mitigate the impacts of beaver. So where does that lead us? Well, if you remember that cartoon I showed you earlier, we want to have, we want to offer a set of solutions and opportunities for improving our watershed. So as you can see, it's removed all the bad stuff. We've got all of our act together, we don't have propensity of septic systems, we don't have oil spills running down the road and everything. But what we do have is an aquifer that's permeable to what goes on in the surface. And if we can allow beaver in some of our watersheds, I'm not saying all of them, but some of the watersheds that we have here locally that are likely to influence the Portnife watershed like this, we can increase the amount of water that's available, and we can do so in a way that provides a clean, a sustainable source in addition to all of the other benefits that beaver provide. the other benefits that beaver provide. So how do we get, how do we get to this point? Well, there's a couple of things I should let you all in on. First of all, this notion that beavers store water and make it available for later use is not widely accepted. Second of all, nobody's ever measured it, at least not to my knowledge. We've gone and we've looked at a lot of different reports and a lot of different studies to say, well, maybe the irrigators are true, maybe the beaver are stealing their water, and then we need to get rid of them all so that the irrigators have more water. That's generally what irrigators think. But when you ask them why they think that, or what the backup is for that, there is no evidence for that. And in fact, some of the work that I've done myself shows the opposite is true, that more water is available. So if you think of this high flow, this high spring runoff that we have, that's actually still going on right now, and we had the ability to store some of that and recharge some of the aquifer, that, that water might be available two, five, 10, 20 years from now. We may not, we may not see a spring runoff like this for another 20 years, I mean, who knows? But the point being is if we had that storage in that basin going on right now, we might see the benefit of that for years to come. But it has to be measured, you have to be able to show that. Because if we can't show the people that are stakeholders, what we say is true, we're not going to get off to the right foot. So that's, that's phase one of what we'd like to do. And I have some other information that, that I presented to you, Mayor, and I'm not sure if, if you guys all got a handout on that, but it kind of gave a bullet list of what we were, what we're proposing and what we're asking for. But essentially what we want to do is we want to measure the amount of surface water that would be stored in beaver dams, and we also want to measure the flow, in other words, what's happening to stream flow. And that's where these come in. These are stream gauge staffs, and as of right now, Watershed Guardians has installed five of these through cooperation with the program at ISU in the watershed. And what these are, what these allow, allow us to do, and our volunteers to do, is if the water is, say, at seven, then we can convert that into a stream flow. And we can do that for all of the different streams in the watershed. The nice thing about this particular technique is, once we calibrate the station, and we can calibrate each one of these levels to a known flow, then anybody who's walking or hiking or visiting any part of the watershed can take a picture of this, and then upload it to our website, and then we, at some point, we're not at that point now, but at some point, we could convert that to a stream flow. So we can take a very low-cost, low-tech technique and collect some information about stream flows. That's one of the first phases, and we've already started that phase. So that's something that we would like some help with. First of all, we'd like some help to be able to get these gauges installed, we'd like some help to be able to get these calibrated. The other thing that we would like is, I've got pictures of these wells, you can see these devices coming in here that are wells. We want to be able to model or predict what's happening to groundwater flows as these beaver dams are constructed. Are we getting any groundwater storage, or are we getting way more than what we think? Some people have done a little bit of work on this without actually measuring it, but modeling it based on the soil types and that, say that there may be as much as 60 times more groundwater stored than what we can see at the surface water of the pond. So we want to verify that. And let's see. So here's an example, this is just, this is just an example of what we're, we're trying to accomplish, and this is on Jackson Creek. And I don't know if you guys can see, that's kind of a dark picture there, but these are a series of beaver ponds located next to the road. And one of the things that we had a problem with up there was, at one particular point, very narrow stretch of road where the road came right next to the stream, beaver had elevated those stream flow up to what was right next to the road. And so the county would go in there with a dump truck, a lowboy, a backhoe, two flaggers, and usually somebody else there to kind of coordinate the whole thing, and spend half a day unplugging that. And then, then they would send a trapper in, they would go in, they would trap that area completely devoid of any of the, any flow at all. All of this wetland, all of this stored water disappeared, a bunch of mud and sediment came rolling down through the city of Incom. And some of you may remember that, a few years ago, there was a big flood that came down there. It's possible that some of that flooding was due to the removal of beaver being pulled out and the breaking of the dams. When the beaver are there, when they're present, everything is maintained and they're intact. So anyway, we put in one of these devices up there next to the road, and they have had zero problems with that particular location. And we're talking right next to the road. So what that means for the county in that particular case is between $15,000 and $20,000 in savings, and we did that basically for nothing. And it's still working, and it worked this year during one of the highest runoff years that we've seen in this basin. So we think we've, we've proved our mettle as far as what we can do in terms of mitigating.
You put what up there?
We put a, what's called a pond leveller. And so what we're trying to do is allow beaver to stay in an area, but in certain areas, keep them from creating this low-level persistent flooding. So what we do is, it's a, it's a device, for lack of a better description, that has a pipe and an inlet protection on it, that allows them to build a dam, but only so high. So they can put as much twigs and mud and stuff as they want to, but as long as you've got that pipe in there, that water level will stay there. And that's really important, because when a flash flood or a big run of water comes down there, it hits the stored water in these beaver dams, and it's like, some people call them speed bumps, flooding speed bumps, I like to think of it as like the barrels out on Barton Road filled with water, or sometimes you'll see those barrels in front of freeway abutments. So if people drift off, they slam into these water barrels, and the water goes flying up in the area, people live. So these are kind of like that, they're these big shock absorbers for these flooding situations.
Do they go through the dam?
I can show you one, I don't necessarily have one with me, but I can show you one. And if you guys know where Houdal Road is, right where Houdal Road and Buckskin Road come together, we've got one installed there. You'll see, we've got it all flagged off up there. So what are some of the alternatives? This is a picture of Dorsak Dam, millions and millions of dollars, I don't know that Dorsak Dam has ever paid for itself financially, I don't know if they generate power off of it or not. It has a lot of problems, and of course, big dams have problems. One of the problems they have is cyanobacteria, which is a really nasty thing that grows in big reservoirs, that kills fish, and not good for people and all that stuff. You also have construction costs, you have maintenance costs, that's one nice thing about a beaver maintained watershed, is other than a few of these devices, they're doing all the maintenance for free, which, if you think about what a dam is involved with, it's pretty cost-effective. Large dams have got, as we well know, from Teton Dam and some of the other problems, I know this year they were looking at Mackey Reservoir as a potential problem, because it's actually over top this year, which is, that hasn't happened for many, many years, and right now it's full at the end of the irrigation season. They thought they were going to be in trouble with that.
So Mike, we're going to need to speed it up quite a bit.
Okay, let's move up, we'll get to the brass tacks.
About twice as far, long as we use the ours.
All right. So what we're looking at is, we would like the city, through part of its program, to increase the flows in the Port Kniff River, to help us out with flow monitoring loggers. We're going to need some electronical equipment that will validate our low-tech technique, so we'd like some flow monitoring. We want to be able to measure the pond volumes, as I showed earlier, wanted to see how big the ponds are, measure that. We want to provide some mitigation, so the pond levellers and the beaver deceivers, we know that, at least in the Mink Creek drainage, we're going to have to do some sort of mitigation up there, so we'd like some help funding with that. We want to be able to take the data, collect it, and use that so that it can be used elsewhere within the watershed in the state. And then we want to do some groundwater monitoring, and then basically what that involves is installing what's known as piesometers, drill holes, and then measure groundwater at these various locations. And again, use that to forecast what we could expect in other drainages within the watershed. And, and then we need some administrative help over there to help us administer the funds we have. So to wrap up, I'm going to say we owe it to our future generations to create a sustainable community, and beaver will help us do that. These young people were helping protect trees from damage caused by beavers, so that beaver can remain in our watershed. So it's a, it's a great technique to help us involve the community and get the community involved in concepts like watershed health. And that's it, I'll entertain your questions if you have.
Any questions, Council?
The Mink Creek watershed, is some of that engaged in that fire area? I don't know exact definition of the fire.
I believe so, the recent fire. I don't know, I've heard that it's over the top, that it's over on the south side, but I know two years ago, we had some fires on the South Fork, and to get back to the issue of fire suppression, the pumper trucks were right there. And I'm not sure that they didn't actually have a helicopter with a bucket, actually dipped their bucket into one of the beaver ponds, and it made that flight time, they were able to get several dumps done in just a few minutes because of that stored water post there.
Well, and then if, if it does come, I've been in areas where beavers were present and a fire gone through, and the beavers are back at it, they help to regrow, but then the filtering effect that it does from runoff and the storage and all that is huge, and it looks to me like that's a mitigation factor for some of us around, you know, here. Do, are there any beavers up Gibson Jack?
I don't believe so. We were there, well, interesting story, I used to take some of the Cub Scouts up there when my son was in Cub Scouts, and we would go up Gibson, Gibson Jack, maybe a mile or so up the creek, and I'd have them catch grasshoppers on the way there. And at the beaver dam, we'd just throw the grasshoppers in the pond, and these cutthroat trout that were about 14 inches long would come up there and slurp them up. And really, the drainage up there, Gibson Drac, there's no changes. It's basically the same drainage that's been there, other than a trail they've got up there now, but it's the same exact drainage. The only difference is, there's no beaver up there.
Any other questions? Okay, super, thank you.
You betcha, thank you. My contact information is on the flyer, if you guys want to email me. Thank you all.
Yep, thank you. Okay, then we will move back to agenda item number six, which is a billboard moratorium update. Staff will be present to discuss the council proposed options for off-premise signs, billboards in the city of Pocatello. Staff will be seeking guidance on how council would like to proceed on this matter.
Good morning, I'm Terry Newey, Assistant Planner with the city.
With the legal department?
I believe in your packet, you received a page that discusses options for billboard regulations, and is what we did is, went through and did some research on different cities in Idaho, and then also northern Utah, kind of along the I-15 corridor, to see what everybody does. And from that, we found basically six different things that are, that are occurring along that I-15, I-86 corridor, actually. And the reason why I did that is, I wanted to look at any city that had an interstate running through it, you know, because that seems to be where a lot of billboards take place traditionally. They, they wanted them on the interstates. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I looked at those cities. The first one that we looked at was cap and trade, and that's a situation where you have X number of billboards within your city, and in order to put up a new one, they have to take down an old one. So you, you maintain that same number. The second one that we found is, they ban all billboards, period. And there are several municipalities that do that. Sandy, South Jordan, Murray, Woods Cross, Bountiful, Utah, Post Falls, Cordillane, Chuback, and Twin Falls, Idaho. And I think that was actually, in all the municipalities I looked at, that was, that was overwhelmingly what, what most of them did. Salt Lake bans only electronic billboards. They allow the traditional billboards as long as they're along the interstate. Let's see, a couple cities allow new billboards or conversions from the traditional to electronic only through the conditional use permit process. And then, another thing that I was kind of looking at with taking all of this, comparing it with our ordinance now, and, and that is just keeping the existing separation standards between billboards, but increase the separation standards between an electronic billboard and residential zoning district, or residential commercial professional zoning district, designated historic district, park, school, church, or cemetery to 300 feet, or possibly more, from a residential district to an electronic billboard, rather than the 250 feet. And send notices to property owners within at least 300 feet, which, 300 feet is, in like our original town site, is a block. But that would help get more people that would be concerned about it. The issue we had on Highline Road, the people up above, they were still outside of that 300 feet, so it wouldn't have done any good for them anyway. In our standards, we don't have anything that limits white lights on these electronic billboards, and white lights are the brightest, and I don't know why we don't have those, but that's the one that I get the biggest complaints on, is this bright white light. And so I'm recommending white light intensity levels, 2,000 for daytime, 200 for nighttime. And then also reduce our full color brightness standards from 1,000 to 500 at night. And then, one thing that I did notice in the municipalities that allow electronic billboards is they require an automatic dimmer control mechanism. They will automatically dim the sign from dusk to, through, through night, and then again at sunrise, but also over cast days, it will automatically dim it. And then, one thing that I'm talking with other staff about is, in our zoning ordinance, we have regulations that regulate the lights, parking lot lights. They can only be 15 feet tall, and they have to be shielded and directed downward, and can't spill over onto neighboring properties. But yet, we're allowing these signs that are much bigger than one light bulb to be there, and they're not having to be directed downward, they're not having to be shielded, and, I mean, our, our code says that they cannot extend past that property line, and that's a part of the code, I think, that we really need to be better about enforcing. And then, also, there's a possibility of making the lighting be turned off between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. There's not a lot of traffic at that time. I've talked with representatives from Lamar Outdoor, and they, they turn their lights off at that time on their billboards because of that same reason. They said they don't need them on, and it's just a waste of power. And then also, one thing that I was thinking is, for billboards in the commercial general zoning districts, that they require a sign exception, which would go along with the requirement for a conditional use permit, it's the same type of mechanism. And then, another thing that we kicked around was having different standards for electronic versus the traditional billboards. And, which means that if we have different standards, different separation standards, that it would be very difficult for them different separation standards, that it would be very difficult for them to convert a traditional billboard into an electronic billboard. So those are the options that we've come up with, kind of looking to see what you all think, and if there's anything else you would like us to pursue.
So if we look at option two, which is the one that I particularly like, that takes care of all that other stuff?
Yes, it does.
I mean, other than the ones that are existing, though, we may want to look at light issues and that kind of stuff.
And under that, on that number two, that part of it is, when an existing billboard becomes structurally unsound, it will have to be removed. And that's one thing that I found across the board, is the owners were not able to do any maintenance on them. And so that they just, they had to be removed.
There's a reason that these towns are doing that.
Yes.
I mean, it's not by accident. There's a reason. You know, times are changing. People want their towns to look different, and they're not going to look different if we keep allowing more and more billboards. It's just, you know, it's a sign of the times.
Yes. And one thing that I was finding just when I was going to the International Sign Association is, one reason for this is because of this. They don't need signs. They're able to get all of the information out on Google Maps with the ads. And it will pertain, the ad will pertain to where you are in your travels. And so they don't need to be wasting $100,000, $200,000 on.
So just our latest example is the new sign on our connector. So now we've got this new $25 million connector that we've taken 25 years to build, and we've got to build. Now the only thing you're going to see when you go across that connector or anywhere around the connector, going down Bannock Highway, is the new giant billboard that's going to be up there. And I've already heard a lot of people that are unhappy about that.
Yes.
And the irony is that in the planning stages of that, over years, the big issue was the aesthetics of what that would do down there. And we tried to comply as much as we could, and now you've got a billboard that disrupts that night light.
So anyway, so that's where I'm at. I'm with option number two, ban new billboards, eliminate old ones as they become ineffective or however you do that. And I think, I think there's a lot of people in our community that feel that way. I've had a lot of conversations with people about billboards and about, you know, how we want our community to look moving forward, and that's where I'm at with it.
Question, on that number two, where you say owner's not allowed to do any maintenance, are you just talking about like major structural, like replacing the pole? It's not like they can't go in and paint it or something like that?
Right, right. It's structural. They can replace light bulbs, they can paint, they can redo the face, you know, like on the traditional boards, they have to manually put up canvases. But they wouldn't be able to repair them.
On the reality is, I mean, as opposed to billboards, as I saw as a kid in Missouri, you know, 25 years ago, a lot of the billboards were made of wood. And they were just big wooden structures. Now everything's going to monopoles. And, you know, it's, and they're built to last. I mean, that's the reality of it. So I think part of the non-repair, disarray is, it's not going to happen as frequently today as it would of 15, 20, 30 years ago, when all the billboards were basically big wooden structures from the ground up. You know, technology has changed.
In preparation for this presentation, Terry, did you talk with any of the people who are in the business of signs?
Yes, I have. And I talked with one in Idaho Falls, and he was going to give me some information that he had that basically is opposite from the information that I have received from the International Sign Association about safety. And he says, everything he has says that they don't cause safety hazards and driver distraction. But I never got the documentation, so.
That can be true.
I don't know.
I think there's more of a hazard with this than there is with a billboard.
Yes, there is.
So if, well, they changed real quick from wooden to monopole to electronic to now this. So if that be the case, let's just ban all signs.
Okay.
All signs, campaign signs.
She's game, you just don't want to speak.
I mean, I'm serious, because if we're going to start to take away business rights, then let's do it to everybody, including individuals and that. And this is the future, so there's no need, you said it, there's no need for signs. You can find on Google, let's ban all signs.
To me, there's a big difference between an on-premise sign and an off-premise sign. And there just is.
You still need to have that business identify their location, so that when you're driving down Yellowstone, you know where Berry's is versus KFC.
Right.
Things like that. They need that, and I understand that.
But what you don't need between Berry's and KFC is a giant billboard that tells you about something that's somewhere else, or maybe not even in our town. Maybe it's a beer sign, or maybe it's whatever. I'm not saying I'm opposed to beer, but I'm just saying, to me, there's a big difference between Berry having a nice sign in front of his business and a billboard right next to his business that's advertising toilet paper or beer or whatever. But to me, that's a big difference in advertising. And just like up on the connector, you don't know, we don't know what that billboard's going to say, but you're going to get to see it every day if you live out on that end of town, day after day after day. And to me, that's a little different than if someone built a restaurant up there and they had a nice little sign on the restaurant that told me where the restaurant was at. To me, that's totally different, and that's exactly why all of these other towns are moving away from billboards.
There are two things that I would interject. First, if we're going to go very far on the signs, I really think that the electronic signs need to be in their own class. And I think the distance that somebody needs to put on, notification needs to be a long ways, not 300 feet. You know, I think it has to be, I would just arbitrarily say 1,000 feet, just because I noticed in a lot of the towns that are growing, the newer areas, they don't have signs. In fact, they don't even want utility poles or anything else. They want to be able to get their front, and they pay for that premium for their storefront to be seen. However, I just recently went to Alaska by way of Canada, and there's always a way around. Obviously, in Canada, they have an ordinance, no signs. So they've got all kinds of trailers off of, semi trucks that they park in the fields right next to the freeway. We've also got to anticipate, if we do things, what is the end run? And we need to anticipate that because there won't be an end run.
I think if you're going to do something with the electronic signs, I mean, that we've got, and as we're moving forward, I'm not sure why we haven't had those lights shaded from the get-go. I mean, it's kind of confusing to me. That would negate the 1,000-foot distance. It would just make sense to me. We shade stoplights for crying out loud.
But depending on where you're at in town, if there's an electronic billboard, you can see it forever. My dad lives up on the east bench, up off of Amund Street up there. And when you're sitting out in the backyard looking out across our beautiful city and the tree line, and it's gorgeous, there's one thing that you see now, and it's a sign at Hold Arena. And that's all you see. Because as you look out over the town, that sign at Hold Arena is down there flashing, and that's what you see. And that's okay, I guess, but I'm just saying, it changes things, you know, it changes.
But Gary, there's two questions. Is that an on-premise sign because we're announcing where the Hold Arena is? That would be considered on-premise.
It very well could be, but it's an electronic sign.
And number two, if we had it shaded, it would be shooting out there for the world to see. It would be focused down on the road. Would we still see that sign?
Probably not. I'm just stating what you see now. And like from out on our end of town, out along the freeway, since all of those new billboards have put, and those are outside of the city, I realize that for the most part. But now since Kirkham Advertising has put all of those new huge lit billboards down the freeway, when you look out the back of our house and you look out that way, that's what you see. You see one of them bright. They light up the sky. You can't, you know, you can't read the sign, of course, from there, but I'm telling you, the whole skyline is lit all the way down the freeway from those signs. It has an impact, I think, on that stuff. And I just think we're, I think we're missing the boat. We want to be forward-thinking, we want to bring new business in here, we love high-tech, we love all those kinds of things. Let's act like it. You know, let's act, let's act like we're moving forward and we're thinking differently than we did 50 years ago.
So I don't really want to chase a rabbit down any hole, but there's a sign over by the Grace Lutheran Church. If I remember right, it was not permitted by the city, but it was permitted by the state because it's along the state right-of-way. And they could, what regulations do they have? I mean, could, along the freeway to what Gary's getting to, along the freeway, if the state said, put every billboard you wanted and light them up, then can that happen, or what happens there?
They still need to meet our brightness standards on those.
So they would need to meet our bright, they could still put it in there. If we say no signs, no electronic, no nothing, they could still, on the state right-of-way?
No, they will not be able to.
It's in the city of Pocatello, they follow our rules.
Yes.
So go that further, because did that come before the city council?
Because that didn't come before the city council, and I thought it was denied. And the state said, no, you got it, and it was built. I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding and I've forgotten the particulars of that sign, but it seems like there was something around there, it never came in front of the city council, but the city council sure got blasted because of that sign.
I remember that.
But it never did come in front of the city council. If I remember right, Matt, you can help me out here.
Yeah, the sign, it did go through the permitting processes right on the edge of a commercial general zoning district. And the issue with that was that the state, because it's on the highway, needed to review it. And their issue was with the separation of the lawn ramp and so forth. And so, but it was approved through, you know, through our process, met all the requirements and so forth, and so.
And then they just had to do additional review from the state.
So we allowed it, and then the state also.
When was that done?
Two years ago, three years ago.
That's not much different than the one out by Staples and that, that we allowed it, and then the state said we didn't get in on it. And I think they made them pull the digital side on one of the side.
Yeah, and, you know, in the case, it's just like Councilman Moore says, where, you know, the billboards that are in the darkest place are going to be the brightest. And so, as you're coming, as you're coming in, out of the gap, and looking down towards the gap, and you see all that because there's not a whole lot there in terms of lighting. And the Grace Lutheran sign is kind of the same thing.
Wait until they throw the lights on the one on the connector, because it's dark there during that.
I don't think that's a lit sign.
You're our liaison for that one.
I don't think that's a lit sign. But what would happen on all of those signs if we had the deflectors that deflected that light down? What would be the outcome of that?
I think it would be positive. It's not something that I have thought about. I think if you had some type of device that directed it down towards the ground and even on the sides, kind of a window of sorts, that could possibly help with some of that. I think that, in combination with just the lighting intensity and so forth, would be a great improvement. Also, the other thing, and I don't know if Terry mentioned this, and one of the thoughts that I've always had, if you go forward with whatever you like, I think that you may wish to consider that the existing, I guess what I call traditional billboards, like the one that is being put on South Valley, not, that any traditional billboards not be able to be changed to electronic. Because if you could imagine if that one on South Valley was electronic, that would have a tenfold more impact than would if it's just a traditional billboard.
And I think those are all, those are great ideas, and we can do that with existing ones, but I think we solve all of our problems going forward, making our problems worse by going with option two.
All these others?
Still leaves a lot of signage around our town. I mean, a lot. Step out from the building, look around.
You know, one of the advantages that Pocatello does have, and it's one of the reasons that the billboard companies are really focused on our main commercial corridors, is because once you get past South Fifth Avenue, or actually, once you get to about ITD, from that stretch of highway to the point that you get to Pocatello Creek, if you look across the valley, there are no billboards, because all of the properties, all the land that butts the interstate is zoned residential. And that has really improved the beauty of our, of our community, at least in that stretch right there. And I think that's one of the reasons that billboards have been kind of focused on our commercial, because they can't put them on that stretch interstate.
Could we, while we're talking about everything, is it possible for us to do a regulation? There's a difference in some signs and other signs. The freeway, I understand, the utility of those signs is probably all night.
Our what?
All night, you know. But the utility of other signs, when there's low traffic, maybe we could have a regulation, you know, similar to noise, where you can only do certain noise at a certain time, and we could regulate light, like you were saying, 10 to 6, 11 to 6, something like that. Is that a possibility?
Yes, it is. I mean.
Can we go so far as to do a reader board at Highland High School? Because I got to tell you, that is one bright light that goes right into the front windows of apartments.
I will talk to the sign contractor and get that turned down.
Okay.
And, you know, damn.
I mean, can we go that, do we go that far with what we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, in essence, we're looking with the moratorium. I mean, we're not issuing any more off-premise permits at this point. Just for your information, moratorium by statute will terminate November 30th, so there's some time, but that's why we're doing this. But, you know, if the council's interested in trying to establish some regulations regarding brightness and hours of operations, I think that's all within the cities, through the council's police power. And we're not, you know, the reality is that I think it would be applicable to signs that are, I mean, I'm willing to fight the fight, but the signs are already up. You know, I think we can at least take a good look at maybe retrofitting the ones that are with these regulations, because the, we're not, the argument's going to be that, well, you're reducing the value of a property well, but not really, because we're not turning your signs off. Well, we are possibly, but if you're reducing, putting damp or shielding, and you're reducing the amount of light that comes out at night or on, you know, a cloudy day, that's still, there's still value there. There's still being able to advertise. So I don't foresee that, like, there's always going to be a fight, but that's something we can handle. But I don't see a problem with trying to go that route.
And like you're talking about, Steve, what's the need for that sign to be that bright? I mean, it isn't, there isn't.
There isn't. They built it, and that's it.
That's the way it is.
Well, and when they're too bright, they're difficult to read, so.
But a sign like that, there's no reason it needs to be on at 11 o'clock at night.
And it's not supposed to be.
And I agree that they need a sign there.
Yes.
Okay. And I think it's right that they have a sign there, and that they're able to get that information out. But I think you could do that without lighting up the whole neighborhood. I mean, I think there's some common ground there.
As you're coming up Olympus, and you come up over the rise and start coming down through the straight part, you can see the glow from that at night. And I think that detracts from a comfortable community.
The aesthetics of the community.
And that's the lighting issue I don't have a problem with.
Except for, we live in a community, and I can appreciate, I can appreciate. Except for, we live in a community, and I can appreciate, I can appreciate the difficulty in, in limiting somebody's business, except for the fact that we live in a community, and we have an agreement with each other of what kind of community we want to have. And the majority of people have the ability and the right to say, I don't want that in my community. And I think that's where we're going with this.
You dim the lights, though. If you dim the lights, and you focus them down and stuff like that, maybe the community would be more interested in a sign that did that, opposed to light the world up.
Well, and that's one thing, as we've been having these billboards go up, we have these lights that shine up. Maybe, in hindsight, we should have been having them shine down. I mean...
And, one other question. What is our area of impact? Because sometimes the cities have some area of influence on water, and sewage, and stuff like that, beyond its boundaries. Do we have that right in terms of lighting and some things like that? Because it's an encroachment, you know, Gary's describing what lighting does as an encroachment into our city boundaries. Do we have a right to talk to the state and say, there's an area of impact here?
I, there is an area of city impact, generally it's a mile from the boundaries, the corporate limits. I, as I sit here right here, right now, I don't, I don't believe that we can, light is not an issue, it's basically things more of a physical, but your point's well taken. I mean, conceptually, it's the same thing as dealing with, but that's something I can look at. But I don't think, you know, that's the reason why you have the billboards row on 15, on the east side, because there's that enclave, that, you know, the city does run down South Fifth, but then there's that space there, there's Bannock County.
And as soon as that property changes, and that property where they've got those billboards becomes more valuable, and it develops into commercial, the commercial people that don't want a billboard hanging over their building, then they'll take the billboards down. You know, right now, they're there because there's nothing else out there.
And as back to a point on, like, ISU, just, there again, that's the state, and that's on state property, so.
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to on-premise signs. I think every business has the right to have a great sign, advertiser business, billboards to me are just a totally, totally different issue, and I think it's becoming pretty common practice in communities that want to improve their look and improve their image, that billboards aren't the way to go.
But can we ask the state to focus those lights down? To shade those? I mean, it's on state property, I get that, but can you ask them to?
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Can we, if it's in our ordinance, can we, or in a, can we mandate it?
I believe when, when, do they turn that off at night, Councilman?
What's that?
Do they turn that sign off at night?
Which one?
The one at Hold Arena.
They, they might, I'm not, I'm not sure. I would imagine at some point in time they do.
Well, my recollection is, when they were, when we were, when we knew that that was going on, or they were going to place that sign there, that that was the initial concern. And we said, we don't, you know, you're saying you can put a sign there, but out of, out of courtesy to, you know, the neighborhoods and the surrounding and so forth, please pay attention to your lighting. And I thought that there was an actual time where they would just turn it off.
And they may be even, like, I go to bed at like 9:30, so they have to shut them down.
You're doing better than I am, I go at 6.
Gary, we're going to go ahead and assign you the 24-hour shift to make sure that that sign is going off.
Here the sign is.
And again, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to them having a sign up there, I'm just stating, those things have an impact, I think, on a lot, on a broad amount of people.
But to the mayor's point, is the, based on the concept of federalism, our regulations would not apply on, on state property.
Okay. All we can do is ask.
We can, we can.
We can talk to them.
Sure, sure. And they may have some lighting guidelines that are being enforced as well, so.
Okay. Anything else?
So, from what I'm hearing, is I understand Councilman Moore's position, and, but, or is that where the council, are we going to, we're trying to craft some regulations, I guess what we'll do is, we'll start working on a draft of an ordinance to present that looks, addresses shielding, actual control of the lighting quality or the power, the levels.
I think, I think the idea of turning them off at 10 is a good idea.
An hour, an hour regulation.
I'm not in favor of limiting commerce to the extent that it's going to damage business. I'm not as progressive as the council.
And we talk about the majority. I've had one person approach me about the billboard, or the electronic, as in Councilman Moore. That's two. He is a person. Well, I'll send to that, agree with him.
I, I think it's, I mean, I'm not hearing that we want, I mean, loud and clear, I've heard that we want to ban them from Councilman Moore, but I haven't heard that from everybody else. But I think we're interested in knowing what it would be like if we were to dim them, if they had some of those shields, if they had a time limit when they could happen. What, what does that look like?
I'd like to ban all new billboards, and then impose these regulations on new billboards.
I think I'm in their tier.
Yep.
There's three.
There's three.
Ban, I'd say ban four.
So, no more new ones, but find out what it looks like for the others, let's see what that looks like. Would you work with the sign companies to get through some of these? But I, but I would like to move that dimming stuff more from, from, and turning them off more than just the billboards, because like Council President Brown said, we've got that one over at Highland High School, and you drive around town, and businesses have them that are just as bright as can be, they're not dimmed, and...
So I remember sitting in the...
Stuff like that. And so I would like to see what it looked like to do something like that. If we're doing billboards, let's figure it out, so that...
1999 or something, and having this very conversation about reading, reader boards.
Right, exactly.
20 years ago.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Almost 30 years ago.
These are giant reportables.
Thank any of them.
So we do have four members on the council that are in agreement to go with number two.
To go with, well, not necessarily, well, go with number two for any new ones and stuff, but...
And work on those other things.
Start regulating the others. I mean, I heard four yeses are these people that are interested in it, so.
And Mayor, if we could get you on board, that'd be fine.
Let's take, let's take a look at all of those things.
It's an election year, he's not going to do that.
Well, we'll be back for the council.
Yeah, let's do this in two years, and...
Yeah, do it in two more years, and...
Changes something.
No, we'll bring it back. Let's work with the sign companies and stuff, and see what works, and then bring it back.
Okay.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, then, this meeting is, do we adjourn this and move into the, this meeting will be adjourned, and then we'll move into a working lunch.